This time we'll call to order the September 4, 2025, meeting of the Clearwater City Council. If you wish to address the council tonight, please complete a comment card. Comment cards located by the clerk seated to the right of the dais. When called to speak, please hand your card to the clerk. This time we'll move to item two on the agenda. I'd like for, uh, ask everyone to stand. For our invocation tonight to be given by Reverend Hallie Wood from the First United Methodist Church in Clearwater, and then remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Loving Creator, we thank you for this, another beautiful day in our city, as we celebrate the start of school, and as we hope together for the change of season into fall. On this, the week of Labor Day, we thank you for all of the work and the labor that goes into the running of our city, for our first responders, our government and city employees, maintenance workers and landscaping workers, for all of the ways that they care for our city, seen and unseen. We ask that you bless and empower the work of this evening, the work of this meeting, of these leaders, that they would take up tonight's agenda with the interests of all of Clearwater's citizens in their minds and in their hearts. We give you thanks that you care for all of your children, and we give you thanks for this work that we do together tonight. It is in your name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Wood. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to introduce our dais tonight. To my far left is our deputy city clerk, Nicole Sprague.
Hello.
To her right is our city attorney, David Margolis.
Good evening.
To his right is city council member Ryan Cotton.
Good evening.
To his right is city council member Michael Menino.
Good evening.
To my right is our city council member David Albritton.
Good evening.
To his right is Vice Mayor Lena Tixchada.
Good evening.
To her right is our city manager, General Poyer.
Good evening.
To her right is Assistant City Manager Dan Slaughter, and to his right is Assistant City Manager Al Bettel.
Good evening.
That will move to item 4.1 on the agenda, and I'd like to call forward Cassie Cordova, our probably work Sustainability Manager for the Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day proclamation. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans, and whereas Clearwater recognizes that human health ultimately depends on well-functioning ecosystems that biodiverse regions can better support food production, healthy soil, and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife. Whereas I, Mayor Bruce Rector, signed the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge and have officially committed to take meaningful action to protect the monarch butterfly, including issuing a proclamation to raise awareness about the decline of the monarch butterfly and the species' end for habitat, launching a public communication effort to encourage residents to plant monarch gardens at their homes or in their neighborhoods, and host a native seed giveaway, and whereas every resident of Clearwater can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. Now therefore, I, Bruce Rector, Mayor of the City of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim September 4, 2025 to be Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in Clearwater, and encourage all residents to participate in community activities to support and celebrate monarch conservation. Cassie, I know this is something we've done for a number of years, just to celebrate not just the monarch butterfly, but our city's commitment to our, preserving our nature and natural environment and the beauty of our community, and I'd like to say a few words about our efforts as a whole.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate your support with this initiative, as well as many of our sustainability initiatives. So as was mentioned, we signed the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. You signed that a few months ago. So we committed to three actions. One is doing this proclamation. The other is a public education campaign, so we've, we've kicked that off. We've created a webpage on our website, micclearwater.com/pollinators. So welcome everybody to visit that and learn some more information. And we've also partnered with our libraries. Our libraries have an existing program at the Countryside East, or the Countryside and the Clearwater East Library, where we have a seed library. So we've asked them to add some native pollinator-friendly seeds, and they've done so. So library cardholders are welcome to go obtain the seeds and do, plant those gardens for us. And we'll be out this fall at several community events and city events, so we look forward to educating the public about this.
Well, thank you for all you and your team are doing to help Clearwater embrace our natural environment and preserve it.
Thank you.
I'd like to call forward Melina Allison and Mary Ellen Schaefer from the Junior League of Clearwater and Dunedin for the Find the Good Day proclamation. Looks like there's more than two of you, but I'll let you introduce yourselves after I read the proclamation. Whereas the Junior League of Clearwater Dunedin is dedicated to advancing women's leadership or meaningful community impact through volunteer action, collaboration, and training, and whereas Find the Good Day, observed annually on the third Thursday of September, encourages individuals to recognize and celebrate the positive aspects of their communities and to take intentional action to uplift others through acts of kindness and service. And whereas this day calls upon us to embrace compassion, celebrate community spirit, and inspire meaningful engagement to build a more connected, resilient, and hopeful society, and whereas the Junior League continues to lead impactful initiatives that strengthen Clearwater and the greater North Pinellas community, and empowering individuals to make a lasting impact. Now therefore, I, Bruce Rector, Mayor of the City of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim September 18, 2025 to be Find the Good Day in Clearwater, and encourage all citizens to take part in acts of kindness, volunteerism, and community service to help strengthen the fabric of our city. Thank you so much for the proclamation and presenting it to us for our signature, and would you like to say a few words?
We just wanted to say thank you guys so much for supporting the proclamation and also supporting our organization. We know that together we can find the good, do the good, and be the good in this community. Uh, we want to thank you for the ability to serve this amazing community for the past 75 years, our organization, and hope to be serving it for way more than 75 more. So thank you so much for this, and also look forward to seeing you guys hopefully at some of our events for this event, for this week, but also in the future. Thank you.
And if you could introduce the third person that I didn't, uh...
We've, well, we got neither of them are Mary Ellen. My name's Melina Allison, and I'm the president. This is our VP of Community Impact, Nikki Kayata, and this is Beth Turner, who is in charge of our SPAC, which works with, um, um, the, the greater Florida political scene from Junior League.
I know the Junior League has done incredible work, not just in Clearwater, but around the country, and really developing young leaders to go out in our community, and, and in doing that performed so many, uh, so much wonderful work to improve our community. So thank you for this, and coming here tonight and joining us, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
regarding item 4.3 on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mike Wallach, Deputy Chief. We're here this evening to give a presentation of the annual report of the red light camera program here within the city of Clearwater. I'm going to start off tonight by going over a PowerPoint presentation that will start with a program summary, and then I'll cover what's required by Florida state statute. Program summary. The relay program started in 2012, using crash data from 2009 and 2010 to establish and determine camera locations within the city of Clearwater. The vendor selected for the project was Redflex. Redflex managed the detection devices and associated software, while the Clearwater Police Department administered the program with a part-time employee funded by the fees collected. In 2021, Redflex, Inc. was required as a subsidiary of Vera Mobility, and in 2024, we entered into a new agreement with Vera Mobility. So where are these cameras located? We have three cameras located at two intersections. Since 2012 to present, there have been three cameras. The first one's at Gulf to Bay Boulevard and Belcher Road eastbound, Gulf to Bay Boulevard and Belcher Road westbound, and then Fort Harrison and Chestnut Street eastbound. And just an item of note, in December of 2024, all the equipment was upgraded to modern equipment. As of July of 2024, legislative chain is required a municipality or a county operating red light cameras or traffic infraction detectors, that they must provide a verbal annual report to the governing body. The report requires specific items and may appear at a regular or special meeting, but cannot appear on a consent agenda and must allow for public comment. I'm going to recover, cover the, cover, uh, go over the items that are required. The requirements are specific and correspond with state's Florida fiscal year. So the state of Florida fiscal year is July 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2025. I'll read through these. So the number of notices issued, notice of violations issued was 15,464. The total number of hearings was 86. The total number that were contested were 39. The number that were upheld were 45. The number that were dismissed was two. The number that were issued as uniform traffic citations, also known as UTCs, was 2,338. The number that were paid was 8,914. And then I will cover on the next slide how the funds are dispersed. So you'll see in this that the 8914 and the 2338 doesn't add up to 15, because the way that you have to get the violation within 30 days, and then you have 60 days to take care of it, so it doesn't always coincide with the time of, of the calendar. So how are the funds dispersed? A normal notice of violation fine is $158. The fine is dispersed as, distributed as follows. $70 goes to the State Department of Revenue and for deposit into general fund. $10 to the State Department of Revenue into the Department of Health and Emergency Medical Services Trust Fund. $3 to the State Department of Revenue for deposit in the brain and spinal cord injury trust fund, and then $75 is retained by the county, so 83 and 75. In Clearwater, a portion of the $75 is used to pay for the part-time program administrator, a monthly per-camera fee to Vera Mobility, and the cost to mail the violations. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Senator, this is one, he, he mentioned that we're required to take the public comment. Normally we wouldn't on presentations, but this is one where we do need to invite the public.
It is kind of an unusual item, and there's really nothing else quite like it. You know, the legislature kind of created a unique, unique setup for this, so the answer is yes, I do believe we should take the public comment.
This time, does anyone want to hear from the public that desires to speak to the
I'm Mr. Haluba. So nice to see the entire fiefdom here, Mr. Slaughter, Mr. Wallach, Sour Puss Gandy. Mr. Wallach just explained that, you know, there's really no financial reason to do these, and in actuality, which I will bring up later on 6.4, these cameras, in fact, which was left out of his presentation, the Florida Department of Highway Safety has produced studies that show a 9% increase in accidents where red light cameras are used. So there's no use for them, you know? Most of the money goes to the county, you know? He's dividing up $3 here and 45 there and everything. It's a, it's a bad program that should be ended. It's useless.
Is there anyone else here from the public tonight that desires to speak to agenda item 4.3? Hearing seen none. Any council discussion or questions for Deputy Chief? I, I do have a couple. Uh, one, one is, um, this, this current contract we, we signed in '23, was it a five-year contract for this?
The most recent one we signed, yes, was a five-year one, sir.
So it wouldn't expire until 2028 if we...
You'd have to look at the dates. I don't remember the date.
And this is merely, we're just giving a report, we're required to give an annual report, so we're not reviewing the contract for...
Under Florida state statute 3160383, we're required to.
And the second thing is, I know when they had this transition with the companies managing it, there was little, it, it was a little awkward with the Circuit Court Clerk's office and communicating and making sure everything got streamlined. Has that all been improved, or is that...
So you're absolutely correct. When we, when we migrated from the Redflex backend software and their old outdated equipment to the new Vera Mobility access software, there was some communication errors with the clerk of the court, have all been since worked out, has been seamless, and even to err on the side of caution when we were going through that transition, we did dismiss citations, so it did impact the public.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Now we'll move to five, uh, item 5.1 on the agenda.
Approve the minutes of the August 21 city council meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve agenda item 5.1.
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Move to item 6.1.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential district for 1408 Seabreeze Street and pass ordinances 9828, 9829, and 9830-25.
Um, good evening, Lauren Maskey, Planning and Development. So this request for voluntary annexation of a single detached dwelling was previously considered by city council, and you voted to approve it. However, after that council meeting, we realized there was an error that required it be brought forward to you again. So for the record, the Development Review Committee reviewed the application as recommending that 0.15 acres of right-of-way also be annexed through this process. The petition is consistent with Clearwater 2045, the city's comprehensive plan, the Community Development Code and Florida statutes.
So anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to the agenda item 6.1? Hearing seen none, may we have a reading?
Mayor, we have three ordinances. First up is ordinance number 9828-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the north side of Seabreeze Street, approximately 145 feet east of Sunny Park Road, whose post office address is 1408 Seabreeze Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33756, together with a budding Seabreeze Street right-of-way into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary line to the city to include said addition, providing an effective date. Next up, we have ordinance number 9829-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the north side of Seabreeze Street, approximately 145 feet east of Sunny Park Road, whose post office address is 1408 Seabreeze Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33756, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as residential low, RL, providing an effective date. Finally, we have ordinance number 9830-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the north side of Seabreeze Street, approximately 145 feet east of Sunny Park Road, whose post office address is 1408 Seabreeze Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33756, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as low-medium density residential, LMDR, providing an effective date.
Is there any council discussion on this item? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 6.1.
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda item 6.2.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential district for 1115 Bridge Avenue and pass ordinances 9831, 9832, and 9833-25 on first reading.
All right. Good evening again. This voluntary annexation petition is also being presented for a second time due to errors that were discovered after the past council meeting. So similarly, the Development Review Committee is recommending this time that 0.2 acres of right-of-way also be annexed as part of this process. The DRC is recommending approval based on the findings that it is consistent with the Clearwater 2045, with the Community Development Code, and with Florida statutes.
So anyone here tonight from the public that desires to speak to agenda item 6.2? Hearing seen none, may we have a reading?
We have three ordinances. First up is ordinance number 9831-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the east side of Ridge Avenue, approximately 432 feet south of Long Street, whose post office address is 1115 Ridge Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, together with certain Ridge Avenue right-of-way into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date. Next up, we have ordinance number 9832-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the east side of Ridge Avenue, approximately 432 feet south of Long Street, whose post office address is 1115 Ridge Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as residential low, RL, providing an effective date. Finally, we have ordinance number 9833-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the east side of Ridge Avenue, approximately 432 feet south of Long Street, whose post office address is 1115 Ridge Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as low-medium density residential, LMDR, providing an effective date.
Any council discussion on this agenda? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 6.2.
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda item 6.3.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential urban and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential district for 3133 Downing Street and pass ordinances 9837, 9838, and 9839-25.
Good evening. This is a new annexation request for a detached dwelling. The parcel's approximately 0.21 acres in size. The owner desires to connect to city sewer and receive city's solid waste services. Annexation of this parcel will eliminate an enclave, as it is fully surrounded by properties within the Clearwater city limits. Uh, the city has adequate capacity to service this with all of the, the necessary utilities and other city services, and the Development Review Committee is recommending approval as it's consistent with Clearwater 2045, the Community Development Code, and Florida statutes.
So anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to agenda item 6.3? Hearing seen none, may we have a reading?
We have three ordinances. First up is ordinance number 9837-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the south side of Downing Street, approximately 795 feet west of South Bay Shore Boulevard, whose post office address is 3133 Downing Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary lines of the city. to include said addition, providing an effective date. Next up, we have Ordinance Number 9838-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for a certain real property located on the south side of Downing Street, approximately 795 feet west of South Bay Shore Boulevard, whose post office address is 3133 Downing Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as residential urban, RU, providing an effective date. Finally, we have Ordinance Number 9839-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the south side of Downing Street, approximately 795 feet west of South Bay Shore Boulevard, whose post office address is 3133 Downing Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as low medium density residential, LMDR, providing an effective date.
Is there any council discussion on this Agenda Item? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda Item 6.4.
Authorize an increase to the current contract with American Traffic Solutions, Inc. doing business as Vera Mobility Systems for postage needed for the red light camera violations.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Chief Gandy, Clearwater PD. So in January 2018, as DC Wallach mentioned, we entered into a new contract with Vera Mobility to manage those intersections. We have three of them at the amount of $768,600. Since the inception of the program in 2012, the PD has maintained our own line item budget for mailing violations. In 2025, we estimated that, that amount to be about $29,000 a year. We've also handled all those mailings in-house up until this new agreement, where Vera Mobility agreed to take on that responsibility. We pay the prevailing postal rate plus $2 per transaction. As we've mentioned in the earlier report, we had some issues with Vera in the onset of this arrangement. We had some mailing problems, and we nearly took it back ourselves to handle it in-house. What he didn't say earlier is that he really rolled up his sleeves and put a lot of time and effort into it. And through Deputy Chief Wallach's effort, we ended up with $60,000 in credits related to all of this. So significant, significant amount of effort to get it on track. The mailings are occurring as they should. And we've had enough runtime now to realize that with the new camera systems, there's a significant increase in the number of violations. We attribute that to a couple things. Primarily, the cameras are much better quality. So imagine your cell phone camera in 2012 versus now. Many times, we would, we would throw out the violations because we couldn't read the tag or there was glare or something of that nature. So two things occurred about the same time. We realized that, that we were having an increase. We need to increase the postage amount. But we also decided to stick with Vera Mobility and have those expenses go through them. So our budget would have been $145 over the five-year period. We need to increase that to $175,000, $175,000, and roll that into the Vera Mobility agreement where it would have a new not-to-exceed amount of $943,600. So it's a, a budget increase of $30,000. But just to reassure you, the, the program covers all the expenses and more. I'd be glad to answer any questions related to that.
So anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.4? Chief, I think somebody's calling.
I'm Mr. Haluba. Well, we heard some new things there. But it doesn't change the fact that this is $943,000 for red light camera postage. Postage for three cameras. Plus $2 each. I don't know how it could get more ridiculous or more expensive. But this was a 35-page document. And I just wonder how many of you read the entire document? No hands, so that must be the answer. Once again, left out of his presentation is the fact that the Florida Department of Highway Safety says red light cameras cause accidents. They don't prevent them. This is just another example of the evil and unethical Clearwater police coming up with another remedy source. This is an utterly stupid program that produces the opposite of stated goals. It's ridiculously expensive. It doesn't pay for itself. It certainly is not popular. Even Mr. Rector doesn't like it. You brought up several good points. Even he admitted there's problems with it, ongoing. They couldn't do it themselves, so they have to outsource it. This program, this $948,000, should absolutely be voted against. But beyond that, the program needs to be shut down. It's useless. Turn off these intrusive red light cameras.
Is there anyone else here from the public tonight that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.4? If not, is there a council discussion?
Thank you, Chief. You actually answered a few of my questions with your, how you clarified and explained that.
Sure.
I just have one more, and it's more like clarifying something for me. The presentation stated that $75 of the fee was, um, was taken by the county or city. And a portion of that was going to be used on postage. So if you can circle back and loop it into this, into this agenda item, how does that, who is collecting that portion? Is it the county or the city for the postage? And how does that fit into this?
So right off the top, the state gets half of this effectively, right? Our expenses, and this, this may help, just so everyone's aware.
I think it was this fourth slide that said $75 was by county or municipality, and a portion of that was for postage. I think if I remember correctly.
So, so out of our portion?
Correct.
We pull the expenses out. And I think this will clear it up for you.
Okay.
So, um, I'll, I'll just give you the year-to-date numbers. The gross revenue in violations, $1,687,384.68. Our entire costs are about $150,000. And that's year-to-date. But you have to deduct the amount paid to the Department of Revenue, which is of that $1,687,851,000. So the, the two, or two different issues here. We pay for the mailings out of our portion of, of the violation.
Okay.
So the state gets theirs right off the top. I, I, I go in weekly and send the revenue to the state.
Okay.
And they divide it up under three programs, I believe? Three different programs. So we don't, we, we see that, but it immediately goes to the State Department of Revenue, and they divvy it up between several different programs. So effectively, um, our mailing costs, for instance, are, year-to-date, were $23,162. What I wanted to avoid, I wanted to incorporate enough, because we haven't run these long enough to realize how many violations we're going to get during the course of the year. I didn't want to run to the end of the contract and have to come back to you and say, "We need to increase the, the maximum to the vendor." Because that can occur if we have increases in violations. So that's the rationale for doing it now instead of waiting till the end.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Cotton?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for the explanations, and Deputy Chief Wallach for your explanation here. And I understand that this is for postage on a previous contract that has been passed. And what I'm about to say is no reflection on our police department. I believe that our police officers do an excellent job protecting the lives and property of our citizens. My position is based solely on my conviction that red light cameras do more harm than good when it comes to public safety. Rather than making our roads safer, they often lead to more collisions caused by sudden stops and those rear collisions at those intersections. So for this reason, I'll be voting no tonight on this op, on this Agenda Item, as well as any future red light camera, agenda items. So thank you again, and just you're all aware.
Anybody else? Uh, well, I, I want to weigh in too. Uh, I'm, I mean, I've said it prior, I mean, I'm not a big fan either. Some of the due process components of this have been improved, and I appreciate that. But in addition to the safety concerns, which just mentioned, and I'm not a big fan. That said, I'm not, also not a big fan of breaking contracts. And prior council agreed to a five-year contract, and I think it's, we're just fulfilling our contractual obligation here. And we're not costing the city any money because we're more than covering this cost out of this item. So that's why I asked earlier how long the contract was, because it runs another, you know, several years. And, and I think, um, I, I will have probably concerns if the program is the same as it is when this contract comes up for renewal. But for me, this isn't about that. This is about adhering to the contract that prior council committed us to and, and apportioning the money that's necessary. Appreciate you doing it now rather than on the back end. I think that's wise, so, um, so I'm for increasing the $30,000 or whatever to, to cover our contractual commitment, so. So with that, is there any further discussion with council? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 6.4.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The four in favor and Councilman McCallum against. Agenda 6.5.
Authorize citywide purchase orders to Bellcore, USA Group, Inc., Lemoine Services Holdings, LP, Royal Plus, Inc., and SLS ColTD to perform as needed emergency response mitigation and restoration services.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Matthew Anderson, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. The item before you is a purchase order that was competitively bid through our RFP process. The goal of this is to line up restoration and mitigation contractors ahead of storms. We are looking to use this contract for some previous storms, but this will set us up in the future for better reimbursement and the ability to respond quicker and more efficiently to storms. We had seven respondents to this RFP. We have chosen to go with four of them as a multi-award. The reason being so is it gives us more options in, in case we needed it. So rather than just loading one contractor, we have the ability to use all four of them. This is a one-year contract with four one-year renewals, essentially making it five years. The initial year has $3.5 million allocated to it. That would cover the CBRC Rec Center, wastewater treatment plant facility, and some other storm projects left over from Helena Milton that we're trying to finalize and get back squared away. The four renewals do not have any money allocated to them. We'd follow purchasing guidelines if, if a project happened, we had a storm, we, we had to spend over $100,000, we'd bring that project back in front of council for y'all to look at and, um, and, and review and approve or not approve. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Is there anyone here from the public that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.5? Hearing seen none, is there any council discussion? It is somewhat related, it deals with the Rec Center, but I did get asked by a citizen, "What's the timeline on Beach Rec Center repairs?"
Currently, we're aiming for March 1st, 2026. There's obviously some factors permitting. This contract being approved is going to help. But yeah, we've, we've got architectural drawings that are in the permitting process now. We're planning on proceeding to go and stick with that March 1st. If something changes, obviously, we'll update you, but that's our goal at this time.
Yeah, thank you. No further discussions, is there a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 6.5.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda 6.6.
Approve a capital project funding agreement grant for the renovations to the Eddie Seymour softball complex, fields 1 through 4.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Art Cader, Parks and Recreation Director. The city applied for the Pinellas County Tourism Development Council grant and was awarded $7.75 million for the renovations and improvements to the Eddie Seymour complex. Those are fields 1 through 4. We have nine of them, so I wanted to be a little more specific. These funds are part of a much larger project, which totals 20, almost $22 million for the renovations, not only of the Eddie Seymour softball fields 1 through 4, but also the Eddie Seymour soccer fields, East and West. This grant or the grant will help fund the overall project and be a part of improving and restoring Eddie Seymour to its rightful places, award-winning facility, featuring some of the best local sports that we have, as well as women's fast pitch softball, where we have the ESPN Invitational Tournament that comes every year, as well as some other national tournaments. The renovation project will include construction of a new two-story press box building, featuring expanded restrooms, multipurpose spaces, elevator, necessary technology to broadcast games, new dugouts, permanent seating, scoreboards, and LED lighting. Staff is recommending and requesting your approval of the capital project funding agreement between the Pinellas County and the city. Under this agreement, the city will provide various marketing and sponsorship benefits to, basically to visit St. Pete Clearwater for a 10-year period. I'm available to answer any of your questions.
Is there anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.6? Hearing seen none, is there any council discussion? No discussion, is there a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 6.6.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Agenda 6.7.
Authorize purchase orders to CTC Disaster Response, Inc., Davy Tree Expert Company, O'Neills LLC, and Tip Top Tree Experts LLC for emergency services related to the removal of leaner, hanger, and stumps throughout the city.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Matthew Anderson, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. The Agenda Item for you is for a citywide purchase order for leaner, hangars, and stumps for emergency services. And we currently have a debris contract that covers that. This would supplement that if the need was to arise during, during a storm. This was competitively bid through our ITB process. We had five respondents. Four of them received some portion of this contract. We, we awarded a primary, secondary, and tertiary for each category. That also gives us that ability to be flexible based on need and availability of contractors. This was awarded with one initial and three additional renewals if needed. There's no dollar amount assigned to any of these years of the contract. Once again, if the need arose, we'd bring that back in front of you if it was over $100,000. I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Is there anyone here from the public that desires to speak to Agenda, Agenda Item 6.7? Hearing seen none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 6.7.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Agenda 6.8.
Approve a modification to the scope for the Long Center renovation project.
Feel like a jack in the box, you know, a third party wreck. We'll get them lined up sometime straight. Art Cader, Parks and Recreation Director. Staff is requesting a scope change to the Long Center and Auditorium project, which was approved by the council on January the 16th, 2025. The original scope of the project included renovations to the corroded metal structure, replacement of all the window systems, and replacement of a new HVA system, deamidification system, and the replacement of all the pool water treatment equipment that was in the pump room. Removal, removed from the original scope was the construction of an indoor sun deck. Separate and apart from the original auditorium contract, at the same January 16th meeting, the council was informed that multiple leaks had been identified in the pool shell and were in need of repair. Consultants were hired, repair specifications done and created, and creative contractors, the contractors on site, secured competitive bids for this repair work. With the removal of the sun deck and reductions in the original scope for items no longer needed due to these repairs, staff requests authorization to modify the scope to include these repairs. No additional funding is required for these renovations, costing about $852,464, as these funds are already in the project. funds are already in the project. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone want to hear from the public desire to speak to this agenda? Hearing seen none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item six point eight.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next would be agenda item six point nine.
Approve change order number one to Roland, Inc. of Pinellas Park, Florida for the reclaimed water piping improvements project.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mike Flannigan, Assistant Director of Public Utilities. I'm requesting authorization to approve a no, no, excuse me, a no-cost time extension for change order one to Roland Incorporated for the reclaimed water piping improvement project. This extends the project duration to a new completion date of April 2nd, 2026. The project provides critical infrastructure improvements, including looping dead ends and mains and replacing broken valves and service lines. The contractor has encountered significant delays outside their control, including long lead times for materials and work stoppages due to impacts of hurricanes Debbie, Helene and Milton. An extension is required to complete the remaining scope of work. This action aligns with our strategic priorities of high-performing government, environmental stewardship and community well-being. Completing this project is essential for maintaining our vital, vital public infrastructure through systematic management. I'm happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Does anyone want to hear from the public desire to speak to agenda item six point
I'm Mr. Haluba. The reclaimed water program is a complete ripoff to the citizens of Clearwater. We shouldn't be doing reclaimed water pipe improvements. We should be shutting the program down. Most residents do not use it. But use it or not, we get billed for it as an availability fee. Now, Jake Raven should object to billing citizens for goods not delivered because it's just wrong. It's not in keeping with enterprise funding rules in any way, shape or form. But even more egregious, Mr. Slaughter, I see you actually got your head up now, is the 10% water tax on reclaimed water that's not delivered. Slaughter's defended this in the past by saying, we do it because we can get away with it. That's your quote, sir. It's, it's absolutely nothing but extortion. Out and out extortion. However, it's no wonder that Mr. Slaughter is known for his evil and unethical actions.
Anyone else here from the public desire to speak to agenda item six point nine? Hearing seen none, is there any council discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item six point nine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda six point ten.
Authorize a purchase order to EWT Holdings, DBA Evoqua Water Technologies for chemical tank and feed rental and bulk odor control chemical delivery.
I'm requesting authorization for the purchase of, purchase order to Evoqua Water Technologies for the chemical tank, rental and bulk odor control chemical delivery in an amount not to exceed of $255,000. Term would be from August 22nd, 2025 through July 19th, 2026. This purchase provides hydrogen peroxide and odofos to control odors and corrosion at the Northeast Water Reclamation Facility and Lift Station 42. We are able to secure this pricing by piggybacking on Manayd County's competitively bid contract. This action aligns with our strategic priorities of environmental stewardship and community well-being. This approach has proven effective, resulting in fewer orders complaints, demonstrating superior public service, and I'm happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Does anyone want to hear from the public desire to speak to agenda item six point ten? Hearing seen none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item six point ten.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Agenda six point eleven.
Approve a five-year lease agreement between the City of Clearwater Police Department and Intercultural Advocacy Institute for the police substation vacant space located at 1498 South Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Robert Casner, Public Works Engineering, Real Estate. The item before you consists of two current city tenants. One is terminating and vacating its current location, Clearwater Dental Clinic. The second current tenant, Intercultural Advocacy Institute, or known as HAC, would like to vacate their Franklin Street location and take possession of the new current vacant MLK location where CDC was presently leased. The lease terms are one annual rent, one dollar. All utilities and insurances will be paid by HAC and emergency uses will be upon request. Any questions, please?
Does anyone want to hear from the public tonight desire to speak to agenda item six point eleven? Hearing seen none, is there any council discussion? If there's no discussion, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item six point eleven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda six point twelve.
Increase domestic water, lawn water, wastewater collection and reclaimed water rates annually by 8% effective October 1, 2025 through October 1, 2029 and pass ordinance 9841-25 on first reading.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council, Mike Flannigan, Public Utilities Assistant Director. Today I'm requesting that you pass revisions to ordinance number 9841-25 on the first reading. This ordinance would increase domestic water, lawn, water, wastewater collection and reclaimed water rates by 8% annually effective April 1, 2025 through April 1, 2029. This rate increase is necessary to fund the operating capital improvement costs needed to sustain the city's utility infrastructure, maintain safe and reliable services and comply with bond covenants. A recently completed water and sewer revenue sufficiency analysis by Stantec recommends this rate plan to meet the utility's projected future requirements. This action aligns with our strategic priority of high-performance government by properly maintaining city infrastructure. We have a presentation on the rate study provided by Letitia Duholic, Senior Manager at Stantec.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Nice to be here again. Thanks for having me. I wanted to just go through some of the summary, a summary of the RSA for water and sewer and our recommendations given some of the updates. So I guess without further ado, let's just hop into, I have one slide here on some history. So historically, your city has approved five years of five-year plan. And, and within that five-year plan, you've done revenue sufficiency analysis or RSAs regularly to make sure that the plan in place is still adequate. The current plan includes a 3% annual rate increase and it started in 2023 and it was based on that 2022 RSA. In 23, we performed another RSA, which essentially validated that the plan was still adequate. Then going forward into last year's RSA, the RSA noticed some sizable increases to capital, which led to some borrowing. And it noted that most likely we would have to revise that plan before it expires in 2027. And so this brings us here to 2025, our RSA again today. That shows continued increase to, to capital and we'll talk about that. That's really kind of driving the, the recommendation here. But before we jump into capital, I just kind of wanted to touch on O and M because as you know, your operating, your, your utility has operating costs and fixed in a capital costs. But on the operating side, we've got that orange line there compared to the black line. So the orange line is what is included in your operating projections for 2025. The 2022 projections were that black line. And so as you can see, your operating costs are a bit higher. They're driven by purchase water costs. As you know, you do purchase water from the county and the county rates are going up. You had increases to personnel costs, electricity, chemicals, and it's just been, we've gone through a period of substantial inflation. And so this has been kind of the story, if you will, for many utilities, not just your particular utility. But I bring this up just so we can touch on it really briefly, but then I wanted to point out to you that that line, the 2025 projected O and M is growing at about 4.5% a year. And so when you consider the fact that your rates, your approved rate increases are only 3%, the purchase power of a utility is actually diminishing as you go forward, you know, because your costs are growing a little faster than, than your revenues. And so having covered O and M, I really wanted to talk to capital. So as you see here on the left chart, the orange bar shows you a much larger overall capital improvement program. So this is the total capital that we have for the, for the RSA for the 10-year period. And as compared to what we had in the 2022 RSA, you've got a sizable increase there. Because of the sizable increase, the pie charts on the right show you that this 2025 RSA is now leveraging or using, using debt to fund a lot more of the capital than was previously anticipated back in 2022. Given the increase in capital, I did want to kind of drill down a little bit on what's in, in that capital, you know, in that orange line that we were just looking at. And so right here, I've got your top 15 projects by project cost listed from, you know, highest to, highest to lowest. And what I wanted to notice here is there's 15 projects altogether that make up about 80% of your total capital plan for the 10-year period that we're talking about here. And this is a, an important dynamic because the number of projects is small, but they carry a big punch, if you will, because they are sizable, a dollar amounts. And so it's easier from a project management stance to, to manage one project than it is to manage several projects, meaning that most likely easier to spend when you have a lower number of projects. But in addition to that, you've got some sizable dollar amounts in projects now that is different from the past. And so we tend to think of percentage completions in projects. And so if you think of a 10% completion on a 20 million, 200 million project, you're spending $20 million. But before, we were only spending about $2 million per project, that annual spend was only about $200,000. And so I point this out to highlight that historical spending for the utility is really not a predictor of what we're anticipating in the future. And I have a slide here that shows a little bit about, about what was spent historically. But your project mix is changing to a point where we just have, we're going to end up seeing much higher spending and that's what's included in, in this revenue sufficiency analysis. The other thing I wanted to point out here before we jump to my next slide is just that that groupings column there shows the water reclamation facility, which I really should have pointed out, you might have those questions. In the prior study, I think I, I missed a big piece there on the prior slide. So the reason, the four major reasons for such large increases to your overall capital are, back in the 2022 revenue sufficiency analysis, the city was going through a master plan. And the master plan was finished after the RSA. And so at that point, more capital was brought into your capital improvement plan, so more costs were identified and brought into the capital plan. So that's one of the factors that brought that orange bar. I should just go back. Can I go back? That's one of the factors that brought this orange line so much higher than the black line. The other thing that has come into play from 2022 is that we've had some regulatory requirements and one of them is that Senate Bill 64, sizable dollars, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But then the water reclamation facility project that the city has approved previously and is prioritizing. So that project is meant to bring your wastewater flows from the East Plant and Marshall Street into Northeast. And I think the concern there is that those two plants sit so close to the coast and they're, they could be impacted, service could be impacted by all the storms that we have around the region all the time. And so this, this project is of tremendous importance, but it is, it's a sizable project. And then the other, the fourth, I think, reason that I wanted to point out, the orange bar is so much higher is just since 22, costs, building costs have continued to go up. And so to the extent that you had certain projects in your CIP that were there before, those dollars are a little bit higher as well. And so it's a combination of those four things, you know, the master plan, the water reclamation facility, some regulatory requirements and inflation. And so, sorry, I didn't point that out before, I meant to. But then going back to here, I wanted to point out the groupings because I do want to talk about the water reclamation facility in particular, since it's such a sizable project. And what, what I wanted to point out here is that the water reclamation facility is really a, maybe a, a father project, if you will, or a mother project, parent project. And it, it's made up of several smaller projects or several little projects or children projects. So the groupings really shows you that the water reclamation facility is one big project subdivided right now into certain lines in that, in this slide. But if we go specifically to that project, back in 2023, a consultant, Black and Beach, had put up a estimate for how much that project would cost. And so the estimate had that low range of $300 million and that high range of $1.2 million. And right now, in your capital project, you have about $730 million in, in this particular project. And by the way, this particular project does take into account or include right now that Senate Bill 64. But anyway, so given the fact that you've got about $730 million in your capital for this particular project right now, the anticipated total project cost is likely to fall between that medium, medium and high projection or, or estimation that Black and Beach had. And so Black and Beach also had pointed out back then that the city might complete this project by 2030. And so given that we're at the end of 2025, we would have full 2026, you know, fiscal year and then going out to the end of 2030 gives us about five years. And so in, if we were to complete this project in the next five years, we'd be spending somewhere between 125 million to 240 million in one year, in each year for the, you know, the average for the five years. And again, I point this out because we're going to talk about the CIP spending and the projected CIP spending is now much larger than it has been historically. So what I'm showing you here is the orange bars are the historical CIP spending. And so you can see they're much lower in 2020, we had about $50 million, 2022 and 23, that doubled. You saw an increase again in 24, 26 is kind of following that trend. But then the size of the spending for 26 and on is projected to be significantly higher. And again, it's because of that project mix, you've got a, a smaller number of projects that represent a really large portion of your capital. And then you've got this water reclamation facility, which is a consolidation, which is a sizable project that will impact your, your spending very differently than you've had in, in the past. And your utility has also contracted with a program manager, which is likely to speed up the process of, you know, maybe even some of the minor projects that are in the CIP. So all of this leads us to sizable needs and so it leads us to the conversation about putting in a new five-year plan rather than continuing with the existing, the remaining three years or two years of your existing plan. And so the, the new recommended plan of annual rate increases is shown right there and it would start in fiscal year 2026, so October 1, 2025. And the monthly impact to a residential customer in 2026 is about $5.21, going up to about $7 by 2030. We also typically bring forward to you all a comparison of where Clearwater falls on a monthly water and sewer bill compared to some of the other communities in the region. So this slide here shows you the fiscal year 2025 comparison. So Clearwater is highlighted with the orange bars in all three charts, but 2025 shows you where Clearwater is today and the average line is the black line in all three charts. The one on the left is 2022. And what you can see there is that since 2022, Clearwater actually shows more favorably, right? And so one can deduct from that, which I know is true, is that Clearwater's 3% rate increases have been smaller than the rate increases of other communities. And so Clearwater currently compares more favorably in 2026. But given some of what we know for 2028, we've also put together a projected 2028 comparison. And so you'll see Clearwater is still projected to maintain or to stay below the average as it has been since 21 and 25, but it'll come back up to kind of that half instead of being of being in the in the lower quartile that it is today. From the top of my head, some of the other rate increases that I know are coming up for some of the other entities are Tarpon Springs is looking at 7.75%, 7.75% for the next five years. Gulfport is looking at 8% for the next two years. St. Pete's looking at 6.25 of a liter per water, and then 7.75 for sewer. They do theirs every year. Dunedin's looking at 15% for the next two years. Tampa's right up there at the 9% too. Tampa's gotten a big program in place to to battle some of the water, water main breaks and things like that. So just to give you an idea of, you know, the, how things are changing kind of throughout the the region. And so our recommendation here would again be for you to implement a new year, a new plan, a five-year annual rate increases that equate to 8% as we talked about, and then to continue to do your revenue sufficiency analysis, just to make sure that if there's substantial changes, whether it be up or down, we can make those adjustments and then bring forward new recommendations. And then I think, just to put everything into kind of a perspective, so I did, we had a survey done of some consumables kind of in the in the area. And so, for example, one gallon of orange juice, and this is a great value out of, you know, neighborhood market and off of Gulf Bay Boulevard, so that one gallon costs $10.99, but yet you can get 1,000 gallons of Clearwater water for $9.13. So it just kind of gives you a little bit of perspective. The pizza pie there is Little Caesar's, again, from Gulf, from a Clearwater store, but Little Caesar's, large pepperoni pizza, a regular sub from Jersey Mike's. And the picture on the left might sound or might look a little funky, and it is a little funky, but we did ask AI to give us an idea of what 1,000 gallons of water might look like, because it's, you know, it's easier for us to think of one gallon jug than it is for us to think of 1,000 gallons. But I think it just gives you a little bit of perspective. And with all of that said, I am happy to answer questions or leave any comments.
So at this time, is there anyone here from the public that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.12?
Thought you'd never ask. Thank you for that presentation on how to lie with statistics. Some of you also look like you might have been nodding off a little bit, so maybe I can help with that. 8% utility rate increase per year for the next five years is a 40% increase in that It's a rate increase that's indicative of the poor management we must suffer under this regime. And of course, the increase is going to include reclaimed availability and associated taxes. It's a, it's another total ripoff. We pay for a minimum water delivery, even if it's not used, even if it's not 3,000 gallons. We pay even more for the sewer to take it away, and then Clearwater charges us to return poop water, whether we want it or not, because they can get away with it, according to Mr. There's no justification for an increase of this magnitude without some option to decline some of these services, namely reclaimed water. To not have an opt-out is, it's just simply pure extortion, because you can't pick and choose. But this is my favorite part, my favorite part of the whole presentation. There's no logical reference to raising water rates 8% to the cost of a pizza, coffee, shampoo, or anything else. Maybe shampoo, because people won't be able to afford to take a shower. There's no logical reference. This is lying with statistics, big time, and you should be ashamed. This increase in fairness should incorporate some exemptions for certain classes of customers: ides, veterans, elderly, homestead property owners. I believe there should be a vote against this outrageous unwarranted rate increase. It's not necessary. But at least most people don't have three homesteaded properties in the area like Ms. Poirier does.
Is anyone else here tonight that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.12? Yes, sir.
My name is Andre Vasallo. I live in Clearwater. I've been in the area over 40, 45 years. And I'm not here to complain. Does anybody here actually work with the Water Department, City Water Department, anybody directly involved? I want to say you guys are doing a great job. About a month ago, I was having some water pressure issues, and I found one phone call, and within a day, they were out with some nice new shiny trucks and plenty of manpower, and they're even training somebody new to do the job. So I want to say you guys are doing a great job. But to compare the price of water, something we all need, to orange juice, that's kind of monstrous. And the 8%, that we're showing here tonight, is not a 40% increase, it's a 47% increase.
Sir, if you could speak to us.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's a 47, but I'm just looking for some support. So it's 47%. And when we looked at the charts, we saw that the biggest reason for inflation was a debit, you know, putting things on debit. And I don't know whether it's they're using credit cards, or they're using bonds, how are you generating this, this debt? That's what I would like to know. We could probably get a lot of the recoup, the problem from just changing the way we're financing, and maybe perhaps instead of going with 8% raise for five years, let's meet, let's meet 5% for, you know, eight years or something like that. Change the numbers around, try to be more fiscal responsible. Just asking for more money because we can is something that I think we all need to be, this affects all of us. We all have to pay for water. If we don't want to buy orange juice, we don't have to buy orange juice. But we all need water. I'm just asking for fiscal responsibility and maybe restructure the rates, so string it out over a longer period of time. I appreciate you letting me talk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here from the public that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.12?
Excuse me, sir?
No, sir. If not, is there any council discussion or questions? Councilmember Cotton?
Yeah, Letitia, thank you for the presentation. And I will say this, I think you hit on what we all need to remember, and that is, you pointed out, the consolidation of our massive capital improvement project to take two of these at-risk properties that we have currently, and make them more resilient, to put them in a place that won't get flooded, won't have these issues where we're having spills into Stevenson's Creek, and won't have those types of problems. I would also like to point out that, you know, I ran on making sure that we don't spend money on flashy things, but the things that are important, infrastructure, public safety are paramount. And I understand, I'll feel the cost, the burden, up to 2030 for sure. However, I'd like to point out in the beginning of your presentation, you did note, you can look, I forget which slide it was, but the increase is around 4%, 5%, and in the following two years, it decreased. And that's from us continually doing and looking at these studies, StanTech's doing and bringing it to us, so that we can charge fairly for the things that we need. So I do understand and empathize that this is going to be an increase over time. However, once this project is completed, I will be the first one there ready to vote to decrease our utility rates, to make sure they comply and fall back into a normal standard. But but this is for something that's needed, it's to make our hurricane-prone area, you know, more resilient, and make sure that you guys are taken care of, so when you evacuate or when you stay here, the water and sewer stay on. And that's one of the key core foundations that government serves, all of our residents, all of our businesses, and I'm going to stand behind that. So this 8%, yes, we'll feel it for a matter of time, but I can assure you that when the time comes, I'll be right there in line to make sure we're bringing it back down.
Councilmember Menino?
Thank you, Mayor. Letitia, thank you for the presentation. Echo the same sentiment, I mean, we're, when we stepped into office, this dais, we said the very priorities that we have of spending on capital projects and making sure we're being fiscally responsible is taking care of vulnerabilities in our community. And one of our number one vulnerabilities was our our water plants. And having two of them on the coast and seeing what it's done to the environment and surrounding community has been devastating to some of those neighborhoods, not to mention long-term effects. We were all, city 100% in support of this consolidated water plant. It is a, it's a massive, massive capital project. And I'm actually kind of surprised when I see you comparing rates of our municipalities, which we were asked to to make sure you share those with us, to see Dunedin's going 15%, St. Pete's 7%, and Gulfport over 6.5% and 8% being relative, but then seeing what we're doing on this massive consolidation plan is is kind of expected. It does hurt, and it hurts all of us and affects all of us, but I think in taking care of our vulnerabilities and our needs in our community, which we all said were first and foremost in our budget process, this is one of the repercussions for those, and 8% still being below average compared to the other communities. I'm glad to hear that this project is still moving forward on the 10-year plan. It is not cheap, it is massive, but I'm glad we're sticking to it and moving forward. I thank you for your your study.
Any others?
I'll weigh in a little bit. I don't want to raise fees or rates on anybody, particularly for essential services like water and utilities. We know, we all know that we've got elderly people in our communities that are, you know, struggling to get by and fixed incomes, and everything else is going up. That said, one of the charts you shared, page nine, showed how we're compared to the other cities in our region. And and all along, first time you presented this to us, one-on-one, and now, you know, that that chart really resonates with me, because I think, you know, we're getting ready to enter the peak of hurricane season, and and none of us are happy when we hear about spills throughout the region. The reality is, all of these cities on this list are increasing, all of them. Not one in our region is not increasing their rates. And part of that is because we have, as a region, we have taken for granted the abundance of water around us, and and put off for a long time changes that need to be made to our water treatment plants and to update them and to make them resilient, so that we don't have a real catastrophe in case we got a direct hit from a major hurricane. And so that's our plan, is for Clearwater to lead the region in doing that, is to consolidate our three treatment plants into one. But that is not, that's not an inexpensive endeavor at this point. It's long overdue, and we're going to do it, because we, we, we know water quality is of utmost importance for not just the citizens of Clearwater, for the entire town and area region. And and I don't want to raise these rates, but the reality is, we've got to do it, and we're only doing it in sync with every other city municipality in our region. I, like Councilmember Menino, I'm happy that we're, even with increasing, we're still below average. I don't know how the city of Tampa has kept it so low for so long, but I, you look at where they're going from fiscal year '25 to '28, that's a significant percentage increase in those three years. So this, I don't like it. I hope there are other things we can do to reduce the burden on our taxpayers to to offset these changes, but this is just something we're all having to do as a region. And as much as I don't like it, it's necessary, and I believe, you know, we're, I'm happy to see we're within the range of what other communities are doing, to address the the issues, but yet be sensitive to to our taxpayers, our residents, and the difficulty they're having paying their own bills. So thank you for your report, and this chart in particular was important to me.
I think if I could just add one more thing, is, you know, as we go through the annual updates, we're playing on a five-year plan, but it doesn't mean you're going to stick to it if if there's, you know, cost savings somewhere, or if there's an opportunity, maybe it's grants or things that that are sizable enough to make an impact. And so if if there is anything that's sizable enough, we'll come back hopefully with some even better news. But it's just, you know, that's what you've done historically. It helps to have the five-year plan in place, it helps from a bond rating stance, it helps your utility staff kind of plan forward too, and you've got a significant amount of capital with this consolidation that you're going to go through. So it's just a, it's prudent to, you know, to do what you're doing, and hopefully, as we update the RSA's, we can perhaps bring some some change.
City manager?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to add, over the last few years, when we've had an opportunity to go through and look at these rate studies and have conversations, our team, together with them, have really looked at, do we absolutely have to raise these rates? How confident are we that we are going to be able to deploy these projects and spend these, you know, these capital dollars to make these projects happen, and then need the rate increase in this year? It's a conversation that we have every year, and when we came to this year, it was yes, because now to not do that could jeopardize or make us have to delay our consolidation plan. The the projects are going to start now, and they're spending big dollars, and so, but we will continue to look at this and have these conversations annually, and if we're not able to spend that, then we will adjust it. We did that last year. They're a great partner, and we have great conversations about this. It's not a matter of staff just looking at the study and saying, okay, raise the rates. I mean, we really look into, you know, what they're projecting, and can we, do we think we're going to be able to implement all of those projects?
Yeah, thank you for that. And also, just to assure, we all want to assure the public, you know, we're looking every day at the way we can do things more efficiently and save. We are very sensitive to the way inflation has been on citizens the past three or four years. And anything we can do on this to to make it more efficient and to keep these costs down, we're going to continue to do this. But unfortunately, this is the reality of what we need to do to catch up and do some long-term fixes, to make water safe for all of us here in Clearwater and Tampa Bay. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? If not, then is there a motion?
Mayor, we'll need to read.
Oh, excuse me, reading.
This is ordinance number 9841-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Schedule of Fees, Rates, and Charges, Article 24 Public Works Fees, Rates, and Charges, amending Section 3A1 Domestic Water Rates, amending Section 3A2 Lawn Water Meters, amending Section 3B1 Wastewater Collection Rates, amending Section 3F Reclaimed Water Rates, amending Sections 3A7 and 3B6 to remove references to the Public Service Commission's Rate Index, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Now, is there a motion?
Yes, for all the reasons previously stated by my colleagues, I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.12.
I'll lose in favor. Propose that it be unanimous, okay? Agenda item 6.13. Thank you.
Approve the Joint Participation Agreement G3F99 for the construction of corporate hangars at the Clearwater Air Park.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mike McDonald, Marine and Aviation Director. The agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation funds the construction of new corporate hangars at Clearwater Air Park. The total project is 2.4 million, and this first phase for the grant in front of you is 1.2 million, with F.D.O. covering half. The city's match will be fully reimbursed by our airport operator, Fly USA, in accordance with their lease and operating agreement. Funding is in place, and staff recommends approval of the agreement and adoption of Resolution 2510.
Is anyone here from the public that desires to speak to Agenda Item 6.13? Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to Agenda Item 6.13?
I'm Dennis McDermott, and I'm here to just talk to you a little bit from a regular guy perspective. I'm not a pilot, I'm not an airplane owner, but I do love the Clearwater Air Park. And so I'm just hoping tonight to convince you that running an airport is a very complicated business, signing grant agreements with very complex requirements may have unexpected future consequences, and ignoring the expertise available from subject matter experts who volunteer to serve as members of your aircraft, your airpark advisory board, is a foolish error. Now, I've never done this before, and I haven't done a PowerPoint thing in probably 12 years, but this is what I sort of put together, asking you to not approve this agreement. And I have some reasons. It's a 40-page, the JPA is a 40-page agreement, and as Mike said, it requires a $600,000 local match, but it also requires the city to certify consistency with the airport master plan and the airport layout plan. And it requires the city to maintain federal funding eligibility for the airport and to avoid any action that renders the airport ineligible for federal funding. The airport layout plan is 69 pages, very technical. It's dated February 2020. It was formally presented to and approved by the city council on May 20, 2021, and it was included in the original RFP that went out, which is how FlyUSA became the contract vendor. And it was also included as an exhibit to the lease between the city and FlyUSA. That's just a picture of the cover, for those that maybe haven't seen it. And I just want to make sure that we understand that a commercial hangar is relatively large. There's two of them on the airport property right now. This picture was in the presentation that I read. I don't know what it is, but it's, I guess, well, it's a commercial hangar. And then the shade hangars, this is a picture from three years ago, of the shade hangars that are currently on premises at the airport. They were built in 1970, so they need to be replaced. And in fact, the ALP says that the hangars need to be replaced, but they need to be replaced with shade hangars, not corporate hangars. And I'm running out of time, so federal funding eligibility, let me just touch on that. The Clearwater City Code is a obstacle for federal funding, and if I had more time, I'd give you the rest of my analysis, but I don't, so I won't.
Thank you. Reach out to us anytime, as you know.
I'm going to put it in writing. Thank you very much. I do hope that you'll realize that that JPA has stuff in it that you just don't want to sign until it gets resolved.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Does anyone else here from the public desire to speak to Agenda Item 6.13? Hearing scene now, is there any council discussion or questions? Councilmember Albritton?
Yeah, I think the issue there was they didn't want to have federal funding because that comes with a lot of strings attached that we really didn't want to have for our airport here. So I'm going to be for this. I think it's something we've been looking forward to a while, and it improves our airport, so.
Okay. Any other council discussion, questions? If not, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Mayor, this will be a resolution.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay.
So this is Resolution 25-10, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, authorizing the execution of a joint participation agreement between the City of Clearwater and the State of Florida Department of Transportation for a grant to construct corporate hangars at the Clearwater Air Park, providing an effective date.
Okay, so I move to approve Agenda Item 6.13.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. opposed, you can handle this. Thank you. Agenda Item 6.14.
Approve slip rate increases for marina transient recreational and commercial tenants.
Good evening again, Mike McDonald, Marine and Aviation Director. Staff is bringing forward for your approval and adjustment to slip rental rates for our transient recreational and commercial marina tenants. At the August 6, 2025 Special Work Session, Council directed staff to proceed with adjustments based on the independent market rate study conducted this spring by Walter Duke and Partners, a state-certified commercial real estate appraisal firm. The study was completed under uniform standards of professional appraisal practices with no financial interest or bias, and included comparisons to modern facilities in Clearwater, St. Petersburg, Dunedin, Terra Verde, and Bradenton. The results were clear. Clearwater slip rates are significantly below market averages. For example, residents at Clearwater's Harbor Marina currently pay about $1,192 per foot per month, while the market rate is $23 a foot. At Island Estates, current market rates average $12.30 per foot per month compared to $20 of the market rate. Commercial charter vessels will also transition from the outdated passenger count formula to a per foot system with market rent identified at $31 per foot per month. To mitigate impacts, the Marine Advisory Board recommends phasing the increase in over six-month period. The approach provides tenants with time to adjust while ensuring the rates reach sustainable levels. From a financial perspective, our marinas operate as enterprise-funded facilities. They are required to be financially self-sustaining. Without adjustment, the system would rely more heavily on subsidies from the general taxpayer rather than revenues generated by the slips themselves. Updated rates now ensure we can fund operations, maintain infrastructure, and reinvest in these public waterfront assets. In short, this proposal aligns with Clearwater Marina's with market conditions, strengthens long-term financial sustainability, and ensures our facilities remain competitive, safe, and well-maintained for decades to come. I'm here with Aaron Brayley, if you have any direct financial questions for us, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone want to hear from the public tonight, desire to speak to Agenda Item 6.14? If you could come forward and just remember to give a comment card to the clerk.
I think Chief Gandy took my comment card and put it somewhere. I'm not sure. He's not here to respond, but I know he did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. My name is, my name's Mike Colby. I'm the current president of the Clearwater Marine Association, representing our charter fleet within the marina. The Walter Duke report that we went through was a standardized report that relied largely on real estate values, property values, and associated infrastructure. And what I found interesting was there was no market survey for you folks to look at that accompanied that report. And the market survey would have given y'all more tools in your toolbox to look at, do we need to go 100% to 100% rate increase? The market survey would have been simply something at a work session. You could have queried Pinellas County Tourism, Chambers of Commerce, hotel designments, find out what our market will bear. We don't know that. We don't know what the market will bear, what the trickle-down effect will be in the marina and the beach in terms of tax revenue coming in. I'm not talking about a $50 increase per fishing trip on my boat, talking about a significant increase. And I don't know what the market will respond to that. I don't know how they will bear that. We don't know. I mean, we're a family beach. At 110% increase in rents, we're getting into some uncharted waters here. The Walter Duke survey also indicated Dunedin was considering a 50% increase. I don't know if they still are. That report may have been old in that manner. Somebody else may know something more about that. But I'm not wild about the Clearwater Municipal Marina being the highest price in the county. Again, we don't know how the market responds to these kind of things. If we're going to have rent increases, and we are, we're pragmatic about this. We understand there's assets that have to be improved, there's things that are changing. We all know there's got to be a rent increase. Whatever it is, but don't phase it in over six months. Phase it in over a year. Give our market time to adjust to the pricing. I don't know how we're going to adjust to this. I mean, I charge $800 for a half-day fishing trip. Do I go to 900, 950? Do I go to Fort Lauderdale pricing? I don't know. The other thing that might be helpful after the rent increase, and I haven't talked with Mike about this, but I will, discuss how we can maybe lower the fuel surcharge. I believe we still have a $0.45 a gallon surcharge on our fuel that's sold about a city. If we could maybe temper that a little bit down during these rent increases, that certainly would help our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here from the public desire to speak to this Agenda Item?
I'm Dennis McDermott, and I don't own a boat, and I don't go fishing very often, but once in a while, I do talk with some of the captains from the marina, and I know that's not a place where you're going to make a lot of money. If you have a boat, you're going to be spending a lot of money on diesel fuel or gasoline, I guess, repairs and everything. I don't think any of those people are actually making a real profit. So when you add a huge rate increase, and when I read through the report, it looked to me like 125% or 140% in some cases, it just doesn't make sense to me. So I would back, tag on to what Mr. Colby just said, and I think a market survey needs to be done before you raise the rents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here on this agenda?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Jim Helmut, and I'm a longtime resident of Clearwater, also a boat owner and a tenant at the Clearwater Harbor Municipal Marina. I think there are some good points that are made. I did comment on the e-comment card. I assume that will be read into the record, so I won't belabor any of the other points. I will bring up a couple of things, but the biggest thing, and I don't know that I have the right to ask a question, but we're aware of 33.02A, I assume. Yes? Does the City of Clearwater, because it talks about the city manager not being able to increase the rent beyond 10%, but do you guys have the right to exceed that?
Yes, we're the city council. Yeah, we.
Okay. Okay. I mean, fair enough. So I'll leave it at this. A lot of us out at the marina are either retired or quickly. I'm going to still own my business, but I've been looking forward to, at the end of the year, being able to enjoy the boat that I've had there for over eight years. It ain't going to happen. I can't possibly justify, I mean, when I look at some of the information that I read thoroughly in that survey, it was pretty obvious to me anyway that there was some cherry-picking going on, and talked about our marina, at least at the Clearwater Harbor, being in good condition, which it's not. A small suggestion, because I'm pretty sure you guys are going to vote for it, and that just means, well, I'll have to sell my boat, and that dream will go away, and for a lot of other folks. I know of at least six that have already said, I got to move, but they don't have a place to move to. I mean, this is a problem in Florida. There's more boats than there are places to be, and that's probably driven up some of the rates. I get it. I'm not against that, but you're killing people's dreams. And we're the citizens who have been paying taxes for years. I believe there was, maybe it's not a mandate, but it's like, hey, the citizens of Clearwater should enjoy this. There's, what, a 90% occupancy rate that was a target for the citizens? And it's not much different for a citizen than it is a non-resident. So I guess the citizens don't matter much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello, my name is Brad Gorst. Been running the Gulfstream Tube, sorry, I'm from Palm Harbor. Been running out of marina on a family-owned business for 50 years, longer than anybody else has probably been around here. But anyhow, a couple of questions I have and comments. Municipal Marina is a community-owned resource, much like a public boat ramp or park. The primary purpose should be to provide affordable access to the water for residents and visitors, not to generate a profit. Turning it into a revenue-maximum venture undermines its public mission. So a couple of things I noticed about the study that I read online. It is, there's a couple errors I've seen in it, because it did say that Wi-Fi is included, trash is included, water is included. What is it implied? That is not the case for us. It is à la carte. We pay extra for, we pay the slip rate, we pay extra for water. We actually paid extra $5 for somebody to come and read the meter, which is a city employee. That doesn't raise a red flag, that doesn't know what does. The marina is the main attraction to the beach. People come here, my customers tell me, they don't come to stay at the hotels or to go play in the sand. They come here to do things. We've got to remember the biggest part of this, the marina and the charter fishing fleet has been there longer than anybody. Been there back when it was a sand pit, before there was a marina, before all the tour boats. So the other question is, what other marinas were we compared to? Is there any other marinas that are local that do what we do? There's no other marinas that really have the amenities that we have here. Nobody else does the fishing boats. Dunedin a few, but there's no other public marinas, they're all private marinas, except maybe Dunedin. But anyway, the other question I have is, I've been told a long time ago by people that I knew, that there's two departments in the city that actually generate funds that go into the general fund. It's the City Marina, because of the fuel sales, and the Gas Department. Why is it that we're having to foot the bill with a rate increase now when we've had general increases over the years and extra money that's not meant for the marina has left the marina and went into the general fund? Shouldn't that be paying for the rebuilding of this marina construction, which is, I'm assuming, is why we're here today, to talk about why there's a rate increase? I mean, let's think about this. So if this goes through, in which I've noticed that it tends to be unanimous vote on things, that I would ask that if it does, and you do rate, give the rate increase, that you open up the monopoly that the city has had for us on the fuel sales and allow fuel trucks to fuel us at the marina, because the fuel sales is what drives the profit for the city. So nothing against the city. So, and then the other one last thing is, I noticed when I was looking at the rates, it looks like some of us in the middle are paying more than the larger boats because of the change in structure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
I already filled out a card, but Mr. Wallace has agreed to yield his time to me as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
What was your name, sir?
Dr. Pierre Desjardins.
All right, so he'll have four minutes.
Yeah, four minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Dr. Pierre Desjardins. I come before you tonight as a concerned citizen and former marina stakeholder to address deteriorating conditions of our taxpayer-funded marina and the troubling path of mismanagement that has brought us here tonight. that has brought us here tonight. When this Marina was first built, it was meant to be a public investment, an asset for our community, funded by taxpayers and managed responsibly on behalf of all the taxpayers. Unfortunately, that promise has not been kept. Years of poor planning, lack of accountability, and questionable financial decisions have left the Marina in decline. Docks are unsafe, facilities are inadequate, and maintenance that should have been routine has been deterred again and again until small problems have become expensive crises. And when I refer to management, I'm not talking about the staff down there that is in the hot, beating sun every single day, doing the best they can with what they have. I was docked in the St. Augustine Municipal Marina in 2022 when Hurricane Ian hit it. They replaced 26 pilings and most of the breakwater dock in 18 months, and yet our Marina has took over two years to replace three pilings and two sections of the dock, simply from lack of upkeep and maintenance, and nothing to do with any hurricane damage. The study states on page 16 that this Marina is in good condition. There's a lot of flaws in the study, but I don't think anybody who did the study actually has been down in the Marina, and I don't know if you all have been down in Marina. It is not in good condition. There are huge eye bolts and chains and wrenches holding the Marina together right now as we speak. Within the last couple of days, a woman has actually tripped over those and hurt herself. So the Marina is not in good condition, according to the report. And now, instead of owning up to these mistakes, management is proposing that boat owners, who already pay slip fees, taxes, and other costs, should foot the bill for this mismanagement. It's not only unfair, it's fundamentally backwards. The Marina's condition is not the result of boat owners failing to pay their share, it's the result of leadership failing to make responsible, long-term decisions with the funds entrusted to them. And let's be clear, asking boat owners to cover the consequences of poor management decisions is a form of double taxation. We already contribute as residents and as users. What we are asking now is not special treatment, but fair treatment. We're asking that the city take responsibility for the stewardship of this public asset, to commit to transparent accountability, management moving forward. I urge this council to, one, reject any request that unfairly shifts the burden to the boat owners; two, conduct a full audit of Marina finances and management practices; three, develop a clear, sustainable plan for repairs and improvements, one that includes public input and ensures accountability; four, take a field trip to Titusville Municipal Marina and see how Marina should be run.
Thank you, sir.
Could I have 30 more seconds?
Your time's up, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate you sharing this.
Thank you.
We have our next speaker.
I owned a house here 35, well, one for 33 years and lost it in a divorce. I got another house, fixing it up a couple of years, so 35 years I've been here in Clearwater as a homeowner. I just turned 80 this last summer, and I've got Slip A2 at the Municipal Marina. I've got a boat named Swengio, which is, means dream in Spanish. I used to be in the boat business in the 80s, and this was one that I just loved. It's a 43-foot sailboat. Doubling the rate is what Mike's gonna do to us. I can't do it. I mean, I can do it for a while. He's gonna do a two-step where I'll go from 650 a month to 900 a month in October, and then 1,200 a month. I mean, he's exactly doubling slip rent. That's outrageous. There's no way you can justify that kind of a rate increase. Now, I'll tell you, Mike has done a superb job of pulling the wool over your eyes. He has done nothing at that Marina. I have pictures of the last, well, except for the two new sections of A Dock, which is where I'm on, but I have pictures of all the damage that was done to the boats at the last, the last two hurricanes went. It was not from ropes breaking, it was from cleats being pulled out of the wood. It was from wood being pulled off the dock. These four-by-six wood, they're that old. They should have been replaced long ago. And, you know, Mike's the boss. You know, I don't know why it wasn't done. If you walk out on the dock, yeah, it looks great. You get a mask and flippers on and go underneath the dock, you'll see rusted cables, some rusted through, some nearly rusted through. The Marina is in tough shape. One of the caps, the fiberglass caps on top, was pushed up this far, another six inches of surge. Now, that's, surge is not Mike's fault. I get that. But that's how close we came to losing at least A Dock these last hurricanes. But cleats being pulled out of the wood, the wood being pulled off the dock, that's inexcusable. That should have been seen and attended to a long time ago. So you should insist that Mike send you a copy of the letter written by Bill Redinger, who keeps a 50-foot Chris Craft on A Dock. Very thoughtful response to this rate increase. You know, we all know that rates go up for things, and the doubling is outrageous. It's just too much. It's way too much. And I would urge you, as, okay, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Take a look at the report.
Thank you, sir. May we have our next speaker?
Hi, my name is Suzanne Foster, the owner, one of the owners of Gulfstream Charters, Fishing Charters in Clearwater Beach. My husband and I started our business over 50 years ago, so I've seen a lot of changes in Clearwater, some good, some okay. One of the things I'd like to say is, we really need to focus on the people that are coming to Clearwater Beach. They're not all wealthy. There are many, many families. We serve a lot of people, bring kids, and these kids are future people that are gonna be making money and spending money, hopefully coming back to Clearwater Beach. So we must keep that in mind. All the people that come to Clearwater Beach, they're not always, they're not always able to come back again, possibly, because the prices are raised. And our fishing businesses, we depend on good weather. It's labor-intensive, high overhead, and very low-profit business. We don't make a lot of profit, and if we have to raise our prices, we're gonna be out of business, because people can't afford to come. So I like to say, I hope you can think about that. We'd like to also be able to have the ability to pick our own fuel vendors, because the city of Clearwater has had the monopoly pretty much on the fuel, and we'd like to be able to do that. I think that's pretty much. If they decide to increase our rate, we'd like to have the trash, the water, the electric, all included within that rate increase. So I appreciate that. Okay? Thank you for listening. I hope you listen to what all of us fishing people have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Smith. I own several businesses here in the Clearwater area, one of them being Stella Fishing Company. That's our family-owned and operated charter business here in the Beach Marina. And I really appreciate the opportunity tonight to talk about the ongoing Marina project and the rate changes that are being proposed. I would like to recognize Mike and his team. I think they've done a phenomenal job through this whole construction project, especially considering what happened with the hurricanes, really to keep the commercial tenants up and going. Business has been tough, but I think they've done it, you know, to the best of their ability, so I hope that's recognized by the city council. Look, there's been a lot of points about these rate changes that you've heard. To date, they're pretty significant. I think I own two slips down there. It's gonna cost me probably $12,000 to $13,000 extra a year. That really doesn't go to me, affects my crew, affects the four or five families that we're supporting down there. And I think one of the big things that I'm asking is that you reconvene the study and take in all the elements. There were some major items that were missed in this study. In particular, when you start comparing other slips and other Marinas, there's one thing about the commercial fleet down there. We have to buy into our charter slips. I've spent nearly a half million dollars in the past three years to buy those commercial leases to get my business going there. And frankly, in a five-year period, it's really a tough payback to get when you increase the rates of these slips. It's gonna even be a more difficult payback, and I'm relying on the fact that I can get another five-year lease to renew. So nowhere was that mentioned in that report, that commercial tenants are actually transacting to get those slips in addition to the monthly lease. I also think that as we look at this, you know, I expect rates to go up. It has to, everything's going up, right? But as we look at this, we should look really how we phase the price increases. Right now, you're gonna, at the end of Phase One, you're looking to do about a 50% increase, and then the rest increase six months after. The Marina is still under construction. We're about to start another project in the parking lot with a parking garage. Some of the businesses down there have been hit 40% after most of us not being profitable last year after the hurricanes, right? So I got other businesses fortunately to support it, but there's a lot of folks out here, like, they're barely surviving. They're barely paying their grocery bill. So it's something to think about. And then finally, this structure going from a passenger fee structure to a per-foot fee structure makes a pretty significant difference, especially since we've heard that if you're a charter boat, a charter fishing boat, you always have to be a charter fishing boat in that slip. And that really doesn't give us the ability to switch our business to another more profitable entity if we're gonna go per foot. Plus, Mike has a hard time saying per passenger, per foot, so that will help him in his explanation of this all. That was a joke, but. So anyways, look, I just ask that you don't make a decision on this tonight. There's a lot more information that needs to be taken into consideration before you do so.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next speaker.
I'm a, I've been very fortunate to be a lifetime resident of Clearwater, Florida, and also to make my living since I was in high school in 2009, working out of the Clearwater Beach I would like to ask the council members to consider the consequences of an over 100% slip rate increase at the Beach Marina. The excessive rate increase will not only affect the livelihoods of charter operators, but will also negatively impact our local and out-of-state visitors who patronize Clearwater Beach, its hotels, restaurants, and attractions, and, you know, so many other things. Please think about the repercussions that such a significant rate increase will have and prioritize affordability and accessibility to locals and visitors like the proposed, as many of these guys have said, the proposed rate increases will be extremely significant to the business that I operate, Salt Cracker Charters. We have three charter boats in the Marina. We don't make a ton of money. Our goal is to get as many people out there to enjoy Clearwater's resources and to, you know, make memories with their families. And we'd like to be able to continue to do that, but this will definitely make it very challenging.
I agree with Jamie. The city has done a great job to keep us in business over the past year during the construction and following the hurricanes, so definitely appreciate that, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We have another speaker?
Hi, I'm Greg Quarter. I've had a family business in Clearwater Marina, charter boats in '77 with my father. I do understand that, you know, rates have to go up, slip rent has to go up. Like my friend says, yeah, we don't make a ton of money doing this, it's more labor love. We just don't want to price ourselves out of business. That's the first thing people say, well, just raise your rates, raise your rates. Well, you can get to the point where people can't afford anymore. I talked to an associate in Dunedin Marina, and what they're doing is a 10% increase. He's paying, he has a six-passenger boat like I do, he's paying 620 a month, plus electric, water, whatever he's doing. They're doing 10% per year for the next four years, then they're gonna cap it at that. So I just hope you guys just gather more information before you decide, you know, what you're gonna raise us to. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else here in the public tonight desire to speak to this agenda? If not, then is there any council discussion? Councilmember Cotton?
I can go to Councilmember Albrecht first.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Okay, well, thank you all for coming out tonight and talking about your situations. You know, I've really wondered how hard it is for you all out at the Marina with all this rebuilding going on. And I agree, I mean, this is something we should have tackled years ago, years ago. But we're doing it now, and what we're gonna end up with is a Marina that's a number-one built Marina. It's gonna be a great Marina, but I know it's hard in the interim, because it doesn't happen overnight. I think myself, at least, I would like to know more about the rates, and maybe, I don't want to see anybody lose their business because of this. I know everybody knows rates have got to go up, and we're building a nice, brand-new Marina that, I mean, this Marina is really old. It's old. And then we had the two hurricanes, and that put people back. I felt so bad for everybody out there, just like I did with all the residents on Clearwater Beach, but I appreciate you guys hanging in there, but what I'd like to see is more information on how we could make accommodate the rates before I can really feel comfortable voting myself to raise the rates at this point.
That's more cotton?
Yeah. Thank you all so much for coming out, making your voices heard, and I do empathize with you. I would have to point out that each of you stood up here tonight, and you agree that you understand the need to raise rates and seeing how that goes over time. And I empathize with the fact that it would be over 100% by April of 2026. I also have to say thank you to you all for thanking Mike and our staff here, because I know that it was of the utmost importance, and when we were dealing with this Marina, is to keep you guys going, because we understand that that's your livelihood, and if we shut that down because of the damage and reprioritize other things, then it would have definitely put you out of business. So with that, you know, and I understand what Councilmember Albrecht is coming to and maybe wanting to look over the study and the rates a little bit more in depth, and I'm not opposed to that either, but maybe in the interim, what goes into effect October 1st, instead of seeing the second hike there in April 1st, we kind of postpone that. We do the initial increase, and as a lot of people have noted tonight, we see how that does affect the market. What is that doing to our visitors that are coming here to enjoy, you know, what we are so blessed to have in our backyard? See how they fare through this, and then readjust, just like we do with the stormwater rates, you know? It's the sliding scale. How is it affecting them? How is it affecting our tourism? And hey, if we can increase it with what comes, you know, I empathize most- And hey, if we can increase it with what comes, you know, I empathize most with is the fact that we are proposing over 100% increase with things still under construction. We have to take that into account, and that is going to deter some people from even coming down here to visit our beaches and enjoy what these people have to offer in the audience. So, you know, if we already had the parking garage done, if we already had Marina done, these brand-new amenities and everything's, you know, looking fantastic, that's one thing to maybe see over the increase that we have by April of '26. So maybe we look to amend the motion to where we put the effect of October 1 rates and then postpone the April 1 rates to see how these folks and others that are out on the beach, you know, fare. So that's what I'd have to say, so thank you.
Anybody else? Do you have something?
Thank you.
A lot there to unpack. Appreciate the presentation. Again, thank you for coming out and letting us hear your thoughts. And last thing we ever want to be is dream killers. We want to be dream builders, and that's, we want to see your businesses survive and the legacy of your families to continue. That means a lot to us. My handfuls are born and raised in this community and don't know other communities and do not call other places home, so that, I know that touches us. It doesn't just fly at us as words. I do have, can I ask a couple of questions? Yeah. So when we approached this, we kind of felt that we were significantly below even market average, and we were very, very cheap. What was our ultimate goal coming out of it? Because I don't believe we need to be Disney World's most expensive, right? So where are we positioning ourselves in the big picture?
We're not the highest, but we're not the lowest. We're at the average for what was looked at.
And then I heard a couple, I heard on both sides, with a new rate, regardless of what the increase is, or when, or what phase, are amenities included in that new rate?
Some of the amenities are. For the recreational tenants, for example, they don't pay trash, they don't pay water. All of them pay electric. The commercial fleet, on the other hand, they pay for water, they have a trash bill, and they pay for electric. But some of the other, like the Wi-Fi, things like that, there's no cost for that.
Okay. I think we also have to keep in mind that we, you know, keep, and construction down there is definitely a valid point, but that's really only one of the marinas we're discussing because there is three of them that we're discussing, and the other ones aren't necessarily being affected by construction, but it's definitely a point to bring in, you know, having that entire landscape down there under construction through this phase, the second phase, and then a parking garage phase.
Correct.
That's a pretty massive challenge in itself.
And the harbor marina is going to have to go through some repairs. The first five section of docks are going to need to be replaced from the hurricane. So the whole north basin is going to be closed effectively, you know, probably for a three-to-four week span while they replace that.
And then is our, is our ultimate goal as a city in providing this service? We're not, are we in this recreation boating business to make money, or are we trying to make sure that we cover our expenses and make it self-sustainable?
And that's the goal with the enterprise fund, is you want to be able to cover your operating costs, you want to be able to, you know, cover repairs, capital repairs, and then the eventual replacement of the marina. So with the beach marina, as you know, we bonded $16 million for that, that we'll pay that back. But, you know, my goal would be in 30 years, when we have to replace the harbor marina, that that capital money is already there. We're not having to do that.
And this is one of the challenges, obviously, municipalities faces when we don't face those challenges early, and not necessarily use the word kicking the can, but when we do keep pushing it down, we may feel that we're doing a service injustice by not, but then when it comes time that we have no choice, that gap that we've created that we have to close is now so big that 100% increase, that's, and I don't blame any of them for having those feelings.
Neither do I. Let's, you know, that's clear. The problem is, is the rate stayed so low for so long that, you know, now that you're playing catch-up, it looks outrageous, but in a sense, what they've been paying for so long, that's been, you know, to the benefit.
Yeah, I get it, and we can't build a world-class marina and market it nationally and worldwide and then charge prices, you know, like we're, I don't want to pick on a city, but like we're a different city than we are.
Correct.
And finding that balance, I guess, is key. This is a tough one. I know it's been tough on you and tough on staff. And you, you know, presented it and showed that I know how you feel about it, and business sometimes is business, and it's been a challenge. But I appreciate all the work you put into it, and you and your team.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I add on to the question and the answer, if you don't mind?
Sure. Let's see if the vice mayor...
Specific to this question is, you know, Aaron's here, if you want to talk about any of the profit and loss aspects of this and the preparation for the future capital funding, because this is not us. We're empathetic, we understand, but we did intentionally keep these late rates low going into this construction period, and to the point of the gentleman talking about the downtown marina having deferred maintenance. We lose about 170 grand a year on the downtown marina, and so when you have that scenario, it results in people deferring and putting off maintenance. We need to get back to a proactive aspect of taking care of it, just like they're demanding, because it's just the financial aspects of it. The fund is, you know, is an enterprise fund. The gas revenue is not being taken by the city. That all stays within your, within his fund. The gas revenue...
Not for the harbor. You know, at the beach marina, we're fortunate because we have land leases and we have fuel. At the harbor, it's just recreational tenants.
But I mean, the fuel revenue does stay with them. But Aaron's here, if you want to talk about it and the profit and loss, because our fear, if we don't make those adjustments, is that we essentially will have to subsidize it with some other funding, which would not be a good, or a good, you know, place to be.
And I, and do you mind?
Well, I want to make sure Vice Mayor has something to give us to discuss. Before I go.
Is it a follow-up thought?
Well, he was kind of addressing my question, but I can wait.
No, no, it's okay.
I want to thank you for that, and I almost think that that's kind of how we should be presenting it and opening up with that compassion and the statement of, this isn't something that we're doing just to chase revenues and create additional streams of revenue to throw in the bank. This is something that we're almost at a place of need and have to do in order to be sustainable without raising the taxes on the citizens. So I think, I thank you for sharing those points. We should probably share that on the front end when we have these kind of emotional discussions like that, because I think it's important, but thank you, thank you.
Vice Mayor, you have?
Yeah, this is a difficult balancing act, because on the one end, I understand that 100% increase is significant, but we also have to understand that we're in a situation right now that could have been avoided, right? If we were previously really taking care of our capital assets and gauging our revenues and allocating the funds and maintaining our infrastructure and our assets, we wouldn't be in this position. So on the one hand, I feel, you know, for those who have to pay 100% increase, but they have enjoyed below-average rates, and the deterioration of these docks are because we haven't been getting the revenue we need to maintain them. So it's a balancing act, and it's a tough place to be. I am, I was kind of interested in your suggestions, sort of, let's okay the first and then revisit this. I'm willing to explore that further.
Okay. All right. Here's my chance now. I want to say to all of you who came out tonight, thank you for coming out. I mean, one of you made a comment, well, you know, you've already made up your minds. We really haven't, and hopefully you've heard by the discussion we've had here tonight, we have not made up our minds. And you're coming out tonight to speak really does make a difference, and thank you for coming out to do that. And, you know, we've been through, not just, this is an enterprise fund, so it's a little different, but we've been through this analysis of all of our city assets, trying to make sure that, you know, part to record an example, that we're not, we're not putting the burden on taxpayers and giving subsidizing use of our facilities beyond what they would pay somewhere else for our market competitive assets. So that's really all we're trying to do here. It's, again, it's an enterprise fund, so it's a little different. The money that we take in goes just to this, but that's really all we're trying to do, is just trying to make sure that we're being fair to all and eventually our taxpayers, because they're the ones who fund all of our city operations, and making sure that we're not subsidizing somebody's use. So one of you also pointed out, there are enough slips for all the boats we have in Florida. It's very competitive even here in Clearwater to get a slip. So we're just trying to find the right pricing, and I think some of you, who have come up here tonight and acknowledged, it's, we've got some catching up to do. You understand that the rates are going to go up. So with all that said, two things I wish, some of them came up and talked about how the study wasn't, to paraphrase, but they said that it wasn't, there weren't good comparables used. There were some things not taken into account, or taken into account that shouldn't have been or weren't appropriate for our marinas here. So what can you share with me about the response to that?
Well, based on the ordinance, you know, it was the rate study, and that's exactly what I followed, was the rate study and that ordinance. And it was done through the, you know, the certified appraisals, the Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practices, which is the standard that they use to...
But I guess maybe they were saying that we didn't use comparable locations or...
Well, in that study, they used facilities like ours, floating docks, same, around the same size. A lot of the comments that I received was that there wasn't any, you know, municipal facilities in the study, and the issue is there's no city facilities that are like ours, or unique, or floating, cement, floating aluminum. Like St. Petersburg is one that I heard a lot about, but they're all fixed, you know, docks. They're not comparable.
So you didn't hear any questions about the study tonight that made you think, well, maybe that is something that this didn't include that we could have included?
No, I didn't.
Because I do want, I think we all want to make sure, you know, we are trying to get them right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to make sure that we've got the right data. And I had, I mean, a lot of pictures and graphs and charts, and I went through it all, but it was a lot to, for me to kind of digest tonight. So I do agree on that part of it, for me at least. Councilmember Albrecht, I think, said this first. It was a lot for me to look at in a short amount of time and really kind of understand. And when I hear their comments, I'd like a little bit more time to look at the rates. And then the second thing is, that really, they caught my ear on was the phasing. I mean, that's pretty steep, and some of those folks are small business owners. They employ people, have families feeding. So the phasing was interesting to me, too, concerning to me, because although we may need to get them to a certain level, I just want to make sure we're sensitive to some of those needs in the way we're doing it. And I'd like to think personally about more time stretching out some, so those are just my own personal thoughts, which I think layer in is what some of you all said.
Go ahead. Did you have something?
No.
Oh. Okay, so we're, I'm hearing like some may want more time, or I heard two people say maybe roll out the first phase and see within those six months before you hit the second. I do want to say, in defense of staff is, I know that, you know, we see it tonight, we see it this week, and it's posted on the agenda. We have had this study. I think I read this two months ago. I'm not sure when this was originally posted, so we have, we have had it for quite a while. You know, now just getting a bit of emotional feedback and getting two sides of the story is hard to now make that decision, because you kind of didn't have that in the front end. So I do see where some were saying about having, you know, maybe the public feedback a part of it. But if that's what, you're in favor of, you know, maybe having that first phase, rolling it out, and then seeing where that takes us, I'd be in favor of that, you know, versus pushing this down the road and making a decision at a later time, because I think we have been sitting on this for a little while, but I'll support whatever direction the DAIS wants to go.
Yeah, I would support implementing the first phase and then maybe revisiting, making sure we put it like a year from now, at least, seeing about that second phase. That should at least, for the Clearwater Beach area, see where construction's at and what's going on there. See if the first phase has helped implement and offset certain capital projects that need, or not capital projects, but investment in what we already have and where we're still deficient. So it'll give us and empower us with more information to see if that second phase needs to be such a jumper. Maybe we can wind it down a little bit. I agree, you know, we asked staff during our strategic planning to look at all rates, parking rates, every fee in the city, and I do empathize, you know, with all the people here, for sure. Thank you for coming out, and I still think that we need to increase them. I mean, we can see that, they said they understand it. Everybody understands things go up.
Fifty percent.
Please, please.
So I think we implement the first portion.
Yeah, please, you know, we've given, we've given you an opportunity to come up and speak. Now it's a time, it's time, it's time for, sir, I thank you for coming. If you can't keep from interrupting us, then we're going to have to ask you to leave, okay? We had a time for public comment. We heard you, we've all heard you. We're debating now, so please let us have our conversation. Thank you.
So as I was saying, I would still be okay with implementing that first phase and then holding off on the second for up to 12 months, but making sure we revisit it entirely.
Is that your motion? Oh, we need...
Well, I was going to say, Mayor, if I could, and I guess to Councilmember Cotton's point, because of the way the agenda item is laid out, if the council is interested in approving partial aspects of it, I think the motion's got to be pretty specific, both for the clerk's benefit as well as for Mike's benefit, so that we know what's actually being approved and what's not. So it may be best to kind of follow the sequence that he put in the agenda item, because, you know, it's broken down by kind of four sections there. Section one is effective October 1, 2025. Number two is effective April 1, 2026, and then below that, we kind of have the beach marina segregated out separately, also with earlier dates. So it may be helpful to kind of segregate it that way, or if you have something different in mind, it's okay to do, you know, slice the pie differently, but I think the motion's going to have to be pretty specific, so everybody knows which rates you're comfortable with, which ones you're not, et cetera. So that's my only comment.
So that's what I was thinking, where he just listed it out within the report that we can see that those increments by October 1, 2025, that's the first phase that I was talking about.
Okay.
I just have a question.
So have you made a motion? Is that a...
Oh, I'm not making it.
That was just a discussion.
That was just a discussion point.
Okay.
I guess my, and I get where you're coming from, and I don't want to, I'm not saying I disagree with that. It's more of a thought process and thinking out loud is, if we're putting ourselves in this position because we're finding ourselves not being able to sustain the level of services and the quality that we come to expect, especially from our marinas, if we're just putting half of what the increase is needed, and then we're pushing it down a year, we're still in the same place that we're here on saying, it's not self-sustaining, we're losing money, and we can't, we don't have the assets and the financial ability to maintain what we have and the quality it deserves, right? So I'm not sure if pushing it that far out, if we're just, we're just only taking half of a bite of the apple, and so, and that's...
We could provide the analysis and tell you, you know, from the financial impact, what it would be and what a potential general fund subsidy would need to be if we postpone implementing the second rates. You know, we could get that information back to you shortly.
Okay.
If you, if that's what's being requested, and we can calculate that. We have the pro forma that was attached to it when it was set, we sent it out in September. I'm sorry, this is September, I'm in May, but we can certainly do those calculations so then you have the information and know what it would do.
The consequences of this decision.
Okay.
I want to say that.
It's okay.
I don't think we want, I don't think we want to, I don't want to cause any change to budget expectation about whatever rates we set, so I think that's the concern, that you're concerned, that we're...
Yeah.
That we're...
I want to, we can do that calculation and show if there would be any kind of a subsidy, what that would be, and make recommendations in terms of where that would come from.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to put this off. I mean, we even had speakers come up tonight acknowledge, you know, they're going to have to get wild.
Right.
So I I, but this is first chance we've had to really talk about it this way. We haven't had a work session to kind of talk through it. So and ask these questions to get your information.
of coming back to the form of the motion and in terms of making sure council and the manager
So I, I mean, would that be helpful to you to have this information here?
and everybody's on the same page as to what is being, you know, moved here. Because there are four categories, if let's say a motion is made to approve those rates
Yes. I mean, I'm sup, if we're, if we're going to approve the effective October 1st, maybe we just approve that piece.
that were proposed to go into effect October 1st, 2025, and only those, that's fine, that's
Meanwhile, you get us the information and we revisit this. You know, the next one wasn't until April 1st.
an appropriate motion, with the understanding, however, that if that motion is made, it is
We kind of see how the market responds, exactly what was said, see if we're still having problems
only covering those that are effective October 1st, 2025.
and is construction delayed? Are we behind an additional six months? That may pose a a different environment for making this decision, and then we go from
The agenda item itself includes some that are contemplated after phase one of the beach
there.
We could do that, if that's the will of the council.
marina construction, currently estimated November 1st, 2025.
I'll make the motion.
I think he's helping to sign it.
And so one question to consider in making the motion is, are you comfortable with that
He's walking to.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I make a.
portion?
Effective six months.
And if the answer is yes, that should be part of the motion.
I think he's.
You're good.
If the answer is no, would not be part of the motion.
I think he's.
But again, given the, given how it's laid out, I think it's going to be important to kind of make sure everyone knows what your motion is, so.
And just for clarity, it's because the beach, the beach marina as well as island estates, we're not raising rates until beach construction is done, which is.
Just just at the beach marina. So Harbor Marina and Island Estates, they go into effect October 1st. The beach marina will go into effect after phase one, which is estimated to be November 1st right now, was the move in date.
And that's because that's when the commercial tenants will be in the newslets.
Right. So essentially, as what I.
I got it now.
Still.
Not all.
So is what I would still say then is that you, the October 1, and then when you do phase one, and then the effective month, six months after, we put that on pause, just like the April 1st, 2026, we're putting off. Does that make sense?
I thought we were going to revisit after we have all the information.
Perfect, even that, it's.
And it should, and if it's sooner, it's sooner.
Right.
Yeah.
So it would be the effective October 1, 2025, with Harbor Marina, Island Estates, transient dockage, omitting that effective April 1st, and then including effective after phase one, estimated November 1st, that portion, omitting effective six months after phase one, until we get more information.
Is that clear?
Do I understand that?
Is that a motion?
Go for it.
It's my.
I make a motion to move forward with what I just explained. Do I need to go in any further detail?
I I understood it at this point, as long as, you know, staff understood, understood it, I feel pretty confident, comfortable, just to recap at least what I heard. What I heard is that the motion will include the approval of the increases proposed for October 1st, 2025, as described in the agenda item. In addition to that, it will include those that are proposed for the beach marina commercial tenants, effective after phase one of the beach marina construction, which is currently estimated for November 1st, 2025. And so those would be approved at this time, if that motion is seconded and if it is approved by the council. And then the direction to staff is to bring back data for the remainder of it, if I heard correctly.
That is correct.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Move to, you know what, we've been at it two and a half hours. I'm going to take, I'm going to take a five minute recess.
Ooh. That's coming up on my time.
It's time we reconvene the city council meeting of September 4, 2025. This time we'll move to item 6.15 on the agenda.
Approve a capital project funding, 6.16, is that where we are?
6.15. 6.15.
Approve a capital fund, project funding agreement grant for the construction of the Clearwater Beach Marina.
Good evening, Councilmember Mayor Mike McDonald with Marina and Aviation Director. Again, bringing you good news. The city has been awarded a grant from Pinellas County in the amount of 7.8 million to support the reconstruction of the Clearwater Beach Marina. This facility, originally constructed in 1965, has not undergone any major replacement or renovation since that time. On June 20th, 2024, city council approved a construction agreement with Coca-Lockus Contracting Inc. to reconstruct the marina at a total cost of $43 million. Construction began in November 2024 and remains underway. The importance of this project to Clearwater's economy is significant. A recent economic impact study reported that the marina's commercial operations host more than 1 million visitors annually, generated approximately 175,400 room nights and 126 million in direct spending. Based on this impact, the city applied to the Tourist Development Council for funding and was awarded $7.85 million grant. The grant requires a cash match in the same amount, which has already been budgeted in the current project. In return, the city must provide marketing and sponsorship benefits to visit St. Pete, Clearwater, for a period of 10 years and main property, maintain property insurance coverage of at least 90% replacement cost value. Approval of this agreement will allow the city to accept and utilize these funds, further supporting the timely reconstruction of the critical public waterfront asset, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I want to hear from the public desire to speak to the agenda item 6.15. Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If there's none, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 6.15.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item 6.16.
Award a construction contract to Creative Contractors, Inc. of Clearwater for the construction of a downtown parking garage.
Evening, Mayor, Council Jeremy Als House, Assistant Director of Public Works. The item before you is for the construction of a downtown parking garage, the not exceed amount being $19,328,118.96. This was part of a competitive bid, was put out, invitation to bid back in May. The bids were opened last month. Creative Contractors of Clearwater was the lowest bidder. All bids, all, there were five different bidders. All the bids were very competitive, very close. 6.6% was the first to the last. The second bidder was just citing roughly $60,000 behind Creative. So we were very happy with that we got a competitive bid that were clear scope, strong bids, and we're excited to bring it before you. There's representatives here from both the design firm and the creative that can answer any questions.
Anyone here for the public desire to speak to the agenda item 6.16? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion?
We got a comment.
Councilmember Cotton?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to staff, thank you all very much. You know, we can see here, taking things out to bid, we see the competition and the free market working perfectly, even though they were so tight. I appreciate you guys going through that process, you know, ensuring that taxpayers are protected and their money is well spent. And to Creative Contractors, I hope the parking garage looks fantastic, you know, the the representations and the attachments look great. So I'm excited to see it get done.
Oh, that's right. We skipped you there, right?
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
In that case, now I have to find my place. I make a motion to approve agenda item 6.16.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Move to agenda item 6.17.
Approve a purchase order to EJ Ward, Inc. for the renewal of license, hardware, maintenance, and service agreements related to fuel management software and hardware, GPS equipment, and services.
Mayor, Councilmember, Dan Mayer, IT Director. EJ Ward has been our fuel dispensing solution, and they also provide vehicle GPS for the fleet. We signed an original contract with them in 2021 that expired at the end of 2024. We were under construction, and we asked if they would continue payment. They did our our service, and we withheld payment since that time until everything was up and running properly. So we have not paid any interest or any penalty fees on the items that we own or rears, and they have resolved some of the things that we were concerned about. We're only renewing for one year. We are going to go back out to bid and test the marketplace and see if there's some solutions that are a little bit better that we could use. So with that, I'll take any questions you have.
Do you want to hear from the public desire to speak to the agenda item 6.17? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If there's none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 6.17.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item 7.1.
These will be second readings. So we have ordinance number 9821-25 on second reading. Ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida vacating a planted utility easement portion therein, Lot 10, Block 70, along with a portion of the south one half of Lot 11, Block 70, Mandalay A subdivision, according to the platero, recorded in playbook 14, pages 32, as recorded in the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
Anyone here from the public desire to speak to the agenda item 7.1? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve agenda item 7.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda item 7.2.
This will be the second reading of the annexation. Ironic that Ms. Cole is the only person here for something that was actually a pretty interesting assignment. I mean, it was a pretty interesting situation. We don't have this come up very often. As she pointed out previously, contraction and de-annexation are not things that come up too often, followed by annexation. But I guess our residents do not agree, since they have not stuck around for this. So ordinance number 9834-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the southeast corner of Main Street and Belcher Road, whose post office address is 2201 Main Street, Dunedin, Florida, 34698, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
Is the one member of the public who's still in attendance, like to speak to this agenda? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 7.2.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda item 7.3.
Next up is ordinance number 9835-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to change the land use for certain real property located on the southeast corner of Main Street and Belcher Road, whose post office address is 2201 Main Street, Dunedin, Florida, 34698, from undesignated Pinellas County to institutional I upon annexation into the City of Clearwater, providing an effective date.
Do you want to hear from the public desire to speak to this agenda item? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 7.3.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda item 7.4.
7.4 is ordinance 9836-25 on second reading. An ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by rezoning certain real property located on the southeast corner of Main Street and Belcher Road, whose post office address is 2201 Main Street, Dunedin, Florida, 34698, from undesignated Pinellas County to institutional I upon annexation into the City of Clearwater, providing an effective date.
Do you want to hear from the public desire to speak to this agenda? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve 7.4.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda item 8.1.
Alligator Creek flood insurance rate map firm changes.
So Mayor, we have coming up to the podium Gene Henry and Sarah Kessler to talk about the firm changes. There was a public notice that you probably saw in one of your communications. Want to take the opportunity for staff to come in and provide a little bit more information. I promise to be as brief as possible.
Good evening, Gene Henry, Planning and Development.
Sarah Kessler.
Sarah Kessler in Public Works.
Thank you, and we're just going to keep it succinct, and you have plenty of time, as we're telling all the residents, so we'll be back before you to give you an update as well. But just going to go over a little bit of history, you know, where we're at the present time, the numbers, because that's always of interest, and then the periodic updates. So with that being said, we have in front of you, if you, this is the Alligator Creek watershed. It goes up to the 580 up on the north, it goes to Gulf Bay on the south.
Yeah, sorry.
That's it. It was going by memory. And then the bay is on the east, and it goes basically keen on the west.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I got it.
So you can see, and the flood hazard area is superimposed, so that shows all the area that's affected. So the project began with the city in 2015. It came to a conclusion of the watershed master plan, and that helped the city look at drainage and stormwater issues. And the secondary item was, at that time, Public Works was saying goodness gracious, the flood insurance rate maps aren't that good, you know, because they were a little bit older. So the, so at that time, the city put in for FEMA a physical map revision request for an application. That went forward. So fast forward to 2024, FEMA notified us just before the storms that they were going there. They got, they finished the maps. They did a lot of work, and we're going to go over the process in just a second quickly, tell you how it all worked. But in 2024, we got the information. FEMA then convened our leadership and our staff. We got our director back there in Kevin, our, there's Lauren Matsky, our director, and then Kevin Garrett, our building officials there as well. But they brought us all together with the other cities. There's five cities that have been affected. There we go. And this is going to be a little hard to see. And then we'll put that over there.
Yeah, so this is just, as we're going through this part, the engineering modeling is where we are in their, in their plan now.
So, and then we moved to the flood risk and review, and that's where they started telling us about the flood insurance rate maps, and then we run into stage number four. And that's when they said, here, here's the cities as well as the other jurisdictions that are involved. They said, here's your preliminary maps, and that's where we're at. And then after that, we're going to have a few months here, and then we're going to step into what's called a comment and appeal period. And that's an official time when the citizens and the businesses can come and talk to us over in Planning and Development and Public Works and say, I want to refute some of this information, and they provide the information. We have to collect that and then send it off to FEMA. And then, once that's done, and the 90-day comment or appeal and comment period ends, it's going to begin, let me back up, it's going to begin somewhere around December to January, somewhere around that time. FEMA, those are rough dates for FEMA, because they aren't 100% sure. But then that period will go on until, oh, probably 90 days, obviously. And then, at that time, when that's over, FEMA has to address every one of those comments and appeals. There has to be a resolution, but it has to come through the city first before we send those up to FEMA. And then, if all that's resolved, then the FEMA will give us a letter of final determination. At that time, everything has to be resolved, and we have a six-month period before we step into what we call the adoption and compliance period. That's when if FEMA in the state decide that we have any insufficiencies with our ordinance, our flood damage prevention ordinance, then we have to correct those and get those to a public hearing, and then have all that completed before the end of that period, and we have the effective maps. If the ordinance isn't updated by that time, then flood insurance can't be, the policies can't be reissued or renewed, or new policies can't be given. So that's, obviously, we're not going to let that happen. We're going to ensure our ordinance is up to date to any comments or, you know, respond to any comments as such.
So this is just a, this is just like the timeline for this. So just to address the meeting that we had, was it last week?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, geez, okay. So that was something, there were a few residents that were a little bit concerned about things happening. And the date I want to show you is the effective maps are spring of 2027. So we have plenty of time to hear those concerns, see what we can do about those concerns. With a lot of people, they were like, this line looks funky, it's the corner of my house. And it's like, well, let's, let's get the survey of your house and see where that line actually is. Because on an aerial, you know, things are not 100% perfect. So just because that line is at the edge doesn't mean that's necessarily 100%. So we have plenty of time to go through those concerns and to see what the true impact is to some of those residents. But, I mean, there are some that are definitely in, but it's, it's not a crisis. Spring of 2027 is when these go effective, so we have plenty of time for that. Okay.
And, and a lot of things, because the number of people that came out to the open house was just under 100 people. We had a full night, and we were getting emails and texts, or emails and calls all during the day. So we got our residents, and thank you to the communications team. They really did a wonderful job. So here are the numbers. Now we're at that part, so I'm sorry to go through this so quickly, and we're available if you need anything else. So, so Clearwater, we work with our team members, and our team is Forerunner, that's a contractor. They run our mapping system or our flood plain management system and keep track of our records. And we also had Jones Edmonds that actually worked with the original study that was helping us as well. They pulled more detailed information. So we were able to pull the two teams together, and we have a building footprints. And there's more information, and we're still crunching the numbers for the overall totals. But the building footprints being removed from the special flood hazard area is 981 buildings. Now, it's residential and commercial. The footprints going in are, is 837. So our numbers and our additional data gave us, it's still, you know, 981 are coming out, and 837 are going in, and those are the building footprints. So FEMA, just a few weeks ago, when they ran the information, they showed that the buildings being removed was 203, and the building footprints being, and this is what we told folks, because this is what we had at that time. And the building footprints going in was 382. So the difference is, is that we have remarkable data. We had remarkable team members under contract that came in and helped, so we have better numbers. So we're going to keep refining those numbers, so when the time comes and we work, we pull things back together, and our communication team steps back out, we could be more targeted. We can still do the newsletters and social media, just as we did, but we could be targeted with the properties that are changed. So the ones that would have been removed, because we're going to let folks know that as well, and then the ones that are being added, but we also have base flood elevation changes and zone changes. So we definitely want to be able to say all that. And we did want to show you, this is, this is what the residents get to go on and look at. It's quite remarkable. So you can go onto our website and go under and find flood maps, and if you go down to that little box right there, you can see that you can toggle between, you know, where it says effective, you can toggle between the preliminary and effective. So our residents can actually go in there and say, oh, well, let me call Sarah and Gene, because I don't, this is where I want to provide, I'm going to comment, or I'm going to appeal, and I'm going to get them the information so I can do that. Or they may say, I'm going in for the first time, what's that mean to me? Or I'm coming out, what's that mean? So we can, we can help our residents more directly.
And we're also going to have Forerunner do a little YouTube video for us to, that we could just put on the website that shows exactly how you put in your address and you toggle and find that. And so we can, you know, send out like a mailer with a QR code so a person can do that on their own. No problem calling and answering questions, but if somebody doesn't want to do that, easy enough to go online and find that information themselves.
That concludes our presentation. It's a lot.
Okay, questions?
I do have one question, and if it's a litany of things, we can table it and get back to it at a later date. I'm sure you guys are already handling it, but you said for the appeals process through your chart, that somebody doing that would need to bring forward their documentation. I assume that there's that list that we're providing to residents, or is it, is it something like you just need your survey and maybe an elevation plat to bring in to make that appeal? What type of documents?
It really depends on what their issue is. Like, it could be an elevation certificate, it could be the survey that they got when they bought the house. It really just depends on.
Okay, perfect. I didn't know if it's something you could just dot down real quick and people could even reference this, you know?
Yes, for the comments, and usually the general question will be considered a comment. When it's appealed, it's usually a developer or a landowner of a significant size, because they want to debate the entire model. That, and they have to run that particular model and show the evidence that it's wrong.
Gotcha. Thank you, guys.
Anybody else? I just want to thank you both. You have a way of explaining all this, similar to FEMA rules, but, you know, to Sarah, throughout the hurricanes and recovery. You just have a way of explaining it to the average citizen that, you know, even I can understand, you know, what you're talking about. Very complicated FEMA rules and all this, the flood insurance and all that in the programs. And thank you for the way you, not just the amount of communication you've had and are having with this new flood map, but the way you communicate. It's really, it's really helpful to our citizens. And love the toggling and all that stuff that you showed that should be user-friendly, but folks will still have questions, because a lot of them just aren't able to toggle as well as others. So that's the way you handle questions of folks, and obviously, they're going to have some significant changes in some of these properties, and I really appreciate that. And Gene, you did a really good job on Bay News 9.
Thank you.
That was a great story that they did, and you handled, represented the city well in doing that.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Everybody makes it very easy, so thank you.
Well, thank you both for what you're doing. Okay, with that, we'll move to item nine, excuse me, City Manager, do you have any other reports? Item nine, City Attorney?
I'm good.
Item 10, closing comments by Councilmember. Councilmember Cotton?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Menino?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Rollin?
Nothing.
Oh, I do. It's important. Okay. So I feel like, oh, great. Listen, after reflecting on everyone's comments yesterday, including those from our city manager, I realize I was remiss yesterday by not pointing out an important observation that I felt I should have conveyed yesterday. Our city staff has been asked into a tremendous amount. They were tasked with cutting spending across the board after first adjusting salaries so that everybody's up to par with the industry. They have successfully negotiated two new contracts with police and fire, worked to address an extensive and aging infrastructure, have advanced numerous capital projects, some which have been waiting in the queue for decades. And last, but certainly not least, they managed the incredible recovery from not one, but two devastating hurricanes. A recovery, I might add, so effective that impressed, that it impressed the state and beyond. So here's the point I want to make. We have asked a lot of our staff, and we did that at the most challenging time, and they delivered. And I hope that they can get some breathing room. On another subject, over the past week, we've also seen an incredible outpouring from artists, art organizations, and art lovers across our community regarding the removal of street murals. That passion speaks volumes about how deeply the arts matter economically to our city and how it matters to the spirit and identity of our city. I also understand why our city leadership has felt they had no choice but to remove the ground murals. It was a difficult decision, but it was made with the city's broader responsibilities in mind. Still, as an artist, I am heartbroken. These works are not just paint on pavement. They are someone's work, their talent. They are expressions of creativity, culture, and community pride. At this time, I think it's worth pausing to reflect. Is this truly the most efficient use of taxpayers' money to undo what we originally funded? And as we look at consistency with Doge and the goal of maximizing the use of public dollars, we should ask ourselves whether we are being the best fiscal stewards we can be. But tonight, I want to make the following pledge. I will support the arts in every way possible, whether it's murals, performances, exhibits, or cultural programming. I will continue to champion the artists who make our city thrive, vibrant, and unique. And looking forward, I believe we can turn this challenge into an opportunity. By working together, we can identify safe, approved, and sustainable spaces for public art that both celebrate creativity and respect our city's responsibility. In doing so, we honor our artists, our taxpayers, and our shared vision for a vibrant community. Good night.
That moves, closing comments by Mayor, and I just have, I just have two folks that I would ask the community to remember, and their families and their prayers. First is Ed Armstrong, who practiced law here for 40 years in our community, and was active in so many different, not just politics, but all kinds of different community organizations. And in addition to being a great lawyer, was a great person, friend to many of us here in Clearwater. And he was appointed to, appointed to the Southwest Florida Water Management District by two governors, Governor Scott appointed him, and then later Governor Santos appointed him. He was serving at the time of his death here this last week or so. But a real lion in our community, an example to all of us of volunteering and giving time to the community. And we will miss Ed Armstrong here in Clearwater, and certainly ask the community to keep his family in their prayers. And then here in the last day or so, we've lost another longtime leader in our community, Wally Pope, practicing attorney here for many years. Wally was instrumental in founding the law. Wally was instrumental in founding the law firm that bore his name. He was a member of the Florida Bar of Governors. He was... he actually recruited me to join the Clearwater Bar back in the day when I first came to Clearwater. He was chairman of the Florida Orchestra at one time. Again, another citizen of our community who was deeply committed to public service and to serving others. In his late years of his life and his career, I saw through his continued involvement at Clearwater Bar, trying to mentor and educate young leaders, young lawyers, to be not just lawyers, but leaders in our community, and volunteer their time as well. We will also miss Wally Pope and the contribution that he made to this great city over his many years of living here and practicing law. So we'd also ask that you remember Wally and Wally's family as they go through this difficult time. So with that, if there's nothing else to come before the Clearwater City Council, we will adjourn the meeting of September 4, 2025.